Good evening, the meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every liberty and every right.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorsky?
Certainly. Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Mr. Chiarella.
Here.
Mrs. DeMeo.
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponowicz.
Here.
Mrs. Lang.
Here.
Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
And Mr. Rutske.
Here.
Madam Board President, you have a quorum present this evening.
Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted August 17th, 2018 at all schools, The Home News Tribune, The Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. If everybody could see their agenda, they will notice that the Board President's report has been moved to the beginning of the agenda this evening, and as I would like to address the concerns of the community in regard to the trailers, and I'd like to do this at the beginning of the meeting instead of having everybody wait and have their questions asked at the second public forum because the trailers are not on the agenda today. So I'm going to be reading a chronology of the trailer project development, and it might be a little bit long, but please bear with me, and everything that I will mention has been documented, and I have the whole chronology right here of the trailer project. So, to begin, a community ad hoc meeting was held on December 7th, 2015. This was the first recorded public discussion on the potential need for classroom trailers. The need for the trailers carried throughout the ad hoc process. The Student Growth Advisory Committee met five times between January and June 2016. The need for trailers was discussed at various times during those five meetings. In September 2016, after the Student Growth Advisory Committee was finished, District Administration began to explore trailer options for Monroe Township Middle School to establish budgets for board consideration. The initial discussion revolved around the replicating the trailer installations that had previously been done at this site when it was the Monroe Township High School. The public board meeting of September 14th, 2016 appears to be the first discussions on potential for adding trailers when a member of the public inquired about the need for trailers in the district. During the course of the 2016-2017 school year, there were references at various meetings regarding the potential for trailers, and the early thoughts were that they would be needed at both Oak Tree School and the Monroe Township Middle School. At the public board meeting of June 14th, 2017 during public forum, the same member of the public made a request for water and restroom facilities in the trailers at the middle school. The BGNT meeting of July 17th, 2017 included a discussion of potential trailer needs for the middle school and for Oak Tree School. The BGNT committee requested that administration explore the option of Porter Johns for use at the middle school trailers. Dr. Kozak conducted administrative meetings on July 20th and July 27th, 2017 to review demographic reports, location of the trailers, and potential sites and schools for trailers. Required attendees at these meetings included the principals of both Oak Tree School and the middle school. Between August 11th and August 15th, 2017, Dr. Kozak directed the administration to meet to specifically review the need for trailers at Oak Tree. The BGNT committee met on August 21st, 2017, which was a year ago this month, and included a discussion and a recommendation for the installation of trailers with restrooms at the middle school only. An aerial view of the proposed trailer placement was provided for the committee to review at the meeting. The public board of education meeting on August 23rd included a committee report that updated the public on the trailers with restrooms. The PGNT committee meeting of October 2nd, 2017 included a discussion on planning for the trailers at the middle school, and again, an aerial view of the proposed trailer placement was again provided to the committee for review at the meeting. The public board meeting of October 18th, 2017 included a BGNT committee report that informed the public of the forthcoming trailers. On December 4th, 2017, an email was sent to the Monroe Township Middle School principal from the Director of Facilities with an attached proposal of the middle school trailers, including a diagram showing the placement of the trailers. That same evening, December 4th, 2017, a BGNT committee met and reviewed the detailed proposal from the trailer contractor for the trailers at the middle school. The public board of education meeting of December 13th, 2017 included a committee report that informed the public, the contract for the trailers at the middle school. At the public board of education meeting of January 24th, the board passed a resolution awarding a contract for trailers at the middle school and approved the submission of a trailer project application to the New Jersey Department of Education. The resolution for the trailers was unanimously approved by the board 10 to 0. Attached to the January 24th agenda that went home to the board members was a copy of the contract, including a diagram of the area where the trailers would be placed. That information was also available to all the members of the public who attended the board meeting that evening, along with the copy of the agenda, the board agenda. The location of the trailers was selected long before the referendum was voted on and not in any retaliation to the referendum defeat. The results of the referendum was going to determine whether we would need to lease the trailers for three years or for five years. So if that had passed, we would only need to have the trailers for three years; since it did not pass, we need to at least rent those trailers for five years. Miscellaneous news articles informed the public that trailers would be installed to address the growth at the middle school. Articles in The Sentinel and Home News included quotes from the superintendent and the building principal of the middle school in regard to the need for the trailers. The trailer project was also discussed at many referendum presentations throughout the community. On May 22nd, the Department of Education issued trailer project approvals. The need for trailers also went through the Budget Philosophy meeting last September 2017 and had to go through the Budget Defense Rounds with the middle school administration in order to have the cost of the trailers included in the 2018-2019 operating budget. The trailer project and location of the trailers was approved by our District Architect Design Ideas Group, the County Interim Superintendent, the New Jersey Department of Education. The township also gave the district building permits for the trailers. It did not need to go through the zoning board or the planning board. The decision of the trailer placement was not taken lightly and was deliberated on by many people many times during the past year and a half, and no one person should be blamed for this decision. We have listened to the public about their safety and security concerns and are doing everything in our power to make sure all students and staff will be in a safe, secure, and healthy environment. Lastly, there have been many questions about the growth of the student population at the middle school. In the past month of July, 73 new students were registered, including 10 new students at the high school and 18 new students at the middle school, which indicates that the student population continues to grow at the middle school. So that's the chronological explanation of the trailers and how we got to them today. And at this time, I would like to open up the public, for public forum, for anybody who has questions or needs, would like to make a comment, or just has a question for anybody in the district in regard to the safety concerns, where the trailers are, why, where, how. So I will do that, but I'm also, we're going to stick to our four-minute time limit. A participant must be recognized by the presiding officer. Each statement will be limited to four minutes duration or less, and the four minutes shall include any response by the representative of the board. If they're still continuing to answer, we will continue to, if they're in the middle of answering, we will continue to let them answer. No participant may speak more than once during each of the three public forums. So at this time, I know, I believe we have the building principal for...
And vice principal.
And vice principal here to ask the school questions, and Mr. Teig is here to answer other questions. So anyone who wishes to come to the microphone, please state your name and your address for the record, and we will adhere to our four-minute time limit and be available to answer your questions.
Hi, Lauren Clerkin, 3 Third Avenue. My concern is I understand the need for trailers and I'm okay with that, and the location is not desirable to most parents. My other issue besides the location and the safety is the kids going in and out of the school. I mean, I understand that they talked about the jersey blocks and putting a fence up and stuff, but what about the kids going in and out of the school for lunch, gym, electives? How are they going to handle that? Like, I emailed Ms. Chanley, I have not heard anything about how she's going to handle that, and I'm just curious of how that safety and logistics is going to work.
Mrs. Chanley, would you like to come up here? And we have...
Okay. Do you need to talk into my head?
Yeah, so, yeah, that would be fine.
Thank you very much. I don't have to state my name, do I? Do I need to state my name? Oh, okay. Welcome, everybody. That is really an easy question to respond to. As a person who has tremendous experience with trailers, I've been here 15-plus years, and I had three sets of trailers at Applegoth Middle School, which actually totaled more than the amount of trailers I'm going to have at this current middle school, and in that situation, exactly like this situation, we had to have children that go back and forth. So what we're going to do is exactly what we did then, we're going to do once again, except I'm actually more comfortable with this situation because the trailers are directly in front of our main entrance to the building. We will have security in the trailers at all times. One security guard at a minimum at all times will be located in the trailers, I'm just trying to be respectful and speak directly to them. So we're going to have a security guard that will be in the trailers, as well as a security guard at the main entrance desk, once again, that's always, and we always utilize our radios and walkie-talkies. So for those individualized children who may need to come in for the nurse, guidance, speech, child study team, an administrative office, work with the teacher, extra time during maybe a period where they were told to retake a test, they will then be escorted, if not by the specific security guard, but by an individualized adult, regardless of who that adult is, at all times. That's the first thing. Also, our sight of vision is exceptional. We actually have the ability, which we did not at Applegoth, to look out and actually see a child come down the ramp. We have two areas, one is the long ramp that you will see that's elongated, as well as the stair area, and both of those areas go directly to the sidewalk. They do not need in any way to step into the street or the actual parking lot area. So that's the first thing. As far as the lunches concerned, we did a change this year. For whatever reason, our lunch period had always gone six, eight, and seven. There was a logical reason at the time, and I have to be honest, it was eight years ago, I don't remember what the logical reason was. We have revamped the bell schedule. We now go sixth, seventh, and eighth. The reason being is when the children come in for lunch, they will also then go to their respective either cycle or gym, depending upon the A/V schedule, so that means they will have to come in as a group force. I'm not talking about the individualized children, I'm talking about the entire two teams will then enter the building, they will then go to lunch, and they will then go to their respective either gym or elective. So these are things that we've already looked at. Did I answer your specific questions?
I have to say about weather.
And we've also discussed weather.
Mrs. Chanley, can you also add the process for drop-off in the morning and pickup?
Sure, and then I'll talk about weather, if you'd like me to. So the process for drop-off and pickup really is also very, much more simplistic than you would think because the drop-off is always in the back. So children that come through the back and may have a classroom, I don't know, 101, which is literally right where they would come to the front of the building, those same children are going to walk through the school, just like they would as if they were going to Ms. Smith's classroom, or, you know, I'm trying to think of someone else, someone else's classroom right there. They're located right there in the front of the building, and they will then walk right out, where, once again, we have security guards, administration, and we always have approximately five to seven teachers that are on duty. So drop-off won't be any different. I would like to, if I may?
Yes, please.
Finish? So the drop-off, though, let's say your child is late, it's not going to be any different. Your child is late, your child must come to the main entrance, sign in, they get the same pass they've always gotten, and now the same routine will happen. That security guard, we always have two in the morning, just so you know, at the front desk, will get up and will physically escort your child, they will radio to the other security guard that will come out of the trailer building. Once again, eyesight, very, very convenient. We didn't have that, I remember. We didn't, it was far away. This is really close there. So children will always have some form of an adult escort. I would say that 85% of the time, it will be a security guard, but if for any reason the security guard is not available, then it'll be an adult. I have three VPs and myself, it could be one of us, but it will be an adult. Incliment weather, we already have what we call a Plan B schedule. So what's going to happen is every teacher who's assigned a classroom in the trailers will have an alternate location, an alternative classroom within the school, so that if we have inclement weather, which we have had, we're, actually, snow is probably not even as bad as rain, but let's say we had a torrential rain, you know, the skies opened up and here comes that rain, it could last an hour, it could last 20 minutes. We know those children will be given an alternate schedule and will make the same announcements I do now when I have the situation, because now I have the situation where maybe kids are going outside to gym. So it's going to be treated as part of our school, and it's going to be handled with the same, probably more, consideration of these inclement weather or whatever the issues might be.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Chanley.
Prakash Parab, 33 Dana Drive. During the Buildings and Grounds and Building Committee meeting, I thanked the chair for allowing parents to speak, and it went for one hour. So did you make a list of the questions the parent asked? So we don't want to go through the drama again, because did you all make the list of the questions and did you all pass on to the principal of the middle school to address those? So that is my first question, why that list was not prepared. You went through the long list to see how logical it was, whether, we knew the trailers were coming, but the placement of the trailer, you give us the aerial view, God only knows who can see that. So when the trailers were put, people start, you had 2,000 people sign and give you the petition. Where is the answer for that? And you all have decided to put certain barriers and all, why you all didn't report today? You all have to report what was the conclusion of the meeting we had last week. No, you all are not doing that, giving a laundry list how it was logical to put the trailers there. You all, you know, there is a transformer pole there with a transformer on the top, you know, bad weather or anything, the fire, sparks can come and put the fire on the trailers. The guy's, crazy guy can stand next to the road and start shooting at the trailers. Is the trailer bulletproof? Now you are saying, oh, we'll put the barriers. Now we are going to put the barriers. That barriers were not even included in the budget. Now you are giving me four minutes to talk? I answer all the questions which were asked during the committee meeting, please. That's my question.
Okay, I'm going to ask Mr. Teig to please come up and address the security and the safety issues that we discussed at the meeting on, I believe it was last Wednesday, and give an update on what we plan to do.
Certainly. Good evening, Jerry Teig. The discussion and the conclusion was that we were going with two rows of concrete jersey barriers. The first delivery came in today, the installation will start tomorrow, and in between that will be a solid steel corrugated metal fence to serve as a barrier, also be some landscaping to buffer some of the acoustics as well.
Okay, is the, because I know that one of the questions would be, would the fence that we're installing, is it bulletproof?
No, it is not.
It's not bulletproof?
The trailers are not bulletproof, nor is the school building itself. Any of our, none of our buildings are bulletproof.
Okay, in regard to the, I know the question regarding the transformer.
Yes. We reached out to JCP and JCP and L, who was the installer for that, and they said that it cannot be moved, and that is the placement for the pole and the transformer.
Okay, and I know that we have already requested that the county, because Bryanville's a county road, see if that, the speed limit can be decreased?
Yes, and we were contacted by, I believe Sergeant Jengol from the Monroe Township Police Department. He has reached out to the county on that. They have talked about adding additional signage through the road department, reinforcing what already exists in terms of slower speed limit. They also made a suggestion for the board to consider to put flashing lights, as is done at the other schools. They are not currently in front of the high school or middle school, but they are at the other schools.
Okay, thank you. And I will, I will say too that at many of the presentations that we've done, and here too, we've always said that the trailers will be located in the upper parking lot of the middle school, and that's exactly where they are located, in the upper parking lot of the middle school.
Thank you, President. You know, the questions, there were several questions from the parents that day. I wish we had. 185 students are going to go there, so which grade students are going to go? Are they going to be rotated, or the same students are going to stay there for 12 months, whatever school year? So that was a concern, you know?
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Prakash, so I took all of the information that we had from the committee. I met with Mrs. Chanley and Mr. Jacoto for an extended period of time. They were very prepared to respond to all the concerns of the parents, especially operational day-to-day. So any other question that comes up, I know Mr. Jacoto and Mrs. Chanley are here to answer any questions that we may have missed in any discussions from the meeting the other night. So they're fully prepared to answer parent questions if we missed one in responding to any of the parents tonight.
Mr. Goodall, thank you very much. I think it would, parents will be very calm, the answers to those questions will be published or whatever the good way, the communication is done. We do appreciate what you have done. Thank you very much. Please communicate those.
So we are also, as soon as the trailers are, get a CEO to occupy, Mr. Teig will let us know, and Mrs. Chanley and Mr. Jacoto are planning an orientation for the students' date and time to be determined, and we hope to invite parents to that as well, so they feel less concerned about their child being out there. Thank you.
Mrs. Chanley, would you like to address the question about who is going to be in the trailers, and are they going to be rotated with different, during the whole year, the different classes?
So we intentionally sat down and had a conversation to see which group, because they're all equal to me, I mean, not all equal to you because they're your kids, but to me, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and we really felt that seventh graders would have the least difficult time. Actually, I'm going to make a statement, the children are not going to have any difficult times. Just like I said all my orientations, the problems, and I respect this as a mother, the problems are always with us as the adults. The children are extremely adaptable, and they usually wind up having zero issues. So the children that we selected purposely were the seventh graders. Sixth graders are all my babies, they come in, they're in an environment all downstairs, which is actually where my office is located, as well as the sixth grade vice principal, and the eighth graders are the big guys on campus, and they want to feel like the big guys on campus, so they want to be upstairs. That's just the mentality of a middle school child, so we selected seventh graders. What we did was, and I want to do thank the board, as well as when we went through all of our budget considerations, we were permitted to go ahead and extend our growth, and now we will have four teams in the sixth grade, six teams in the seventh grade, and four teams in the eighth grade. Why? The larger, excuse me, the more teams I have, the smaller the team is, the smaller the class size is. So by having six teams in the seventh grade, it allows me to put two teams outside, and no, they will not be rotated, that is not what would be best academically, pedagogically, emotionally, or socially for children, and the children will be selected randomly. All children are selected randomly as of right now, for those of you that have come to my orientation either this year or any of the years that I've had your older children, they are literally selected, almost like playing cards, and then the computer does the rest, so two teams will be placed in the outside. Will any considerations be given? Medical considerations are given, but other than that, what I do for one, I'd have to do for all, and we do have approximately 100 to 185 children placed out there, and similar like we did, once again, I've had two other sets of trailers at the last school where I was vice principal and principal, and that is what it looks like. So no, they will not be rotated out, they will remain on those two teams.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the public have any comments or questions in regard to the trailers?
Hi, Ramragnath, 6 Ovin's Drive, Monroe. Question I had is, for this year, right, if we had not put in the trailers, would we have been able to get by? What is the differential in enrollment we're going to see this year?
What is the?
Last I heard, the middle school has eclipsed 1,700 students. That's estimated 500 students over functional capacity of that building. Could we survive? Probably, but the idea was to reduce class size so teachers can focus on less students in class, and we continue to see from whatever report we get or actual enrollment that the middle school is certainly in need of additional classroom space, and so, yes, could we survive without them, but it would not be ideal classroom situations that we have seen over the last few years. That's why the decision made, was made to get the trailers.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had is, were all the BOE members, did you vote unanimously in terms of the location of the trailers, or was someone, someone else made that decision?
Well, the Board of Education always has to be the last...
Right.
...group of people who support anything, and it was unanimously supported in January, the Board of Education did get the, all the information that came in their packet, and there was a illustration, I believe it was an aerial photo of where the trailers would be located.
Right, and then the last question I had is, in considering putting these trailers in the back, was that, for example, even considered, and what would have been the difference or additional cost or what have you in putting it in the back?
Is Jerry, could Jerry answer?
Sure.
Jerry?
I'll steal from Mr. Teig, you can do anything but at a cost, and Mr. Teig, if you want to just follow up, because you have a long history of trailers in the back at that current building?
Certainly. There had been trailers behind the former high school, and that was prior to the 1997 addition, so where the addition and the team rooms are constructed is where those trailers sat. The sewer service for the building exits through the front of the building. There is a sewer dejection pump which is located in the interior of the former boiler room, so in essence, if you needed to tie in sewer and water or sewer for the trailers, you would have had to literally, you know, go in through the building itself, board underneath the building, or open up the back section of the building, something that really just wasn't feasible. Could it have been done? Yes. Was it appropriate for a three-year window? No, it didn't seem appropriate.
Mr. Goodall, would you like to talk about when the trailers were there at the high school when you were there?
Having had experience at the old high school, now the current middle school, we had about 15 trailer classrooms and a double-wide trailer for extra physical education classes. They did not have access to running water and sewer. It posed, although we lessen class size, which was ideal for teaching, it caused a lot of logistical problems and supervision problems with kids constantly going in and out of the building to use the restrooms in the, near the gym area, kids being called to come in and out for going to the nurse, going to the vice principal's office, coming to the main office, being picked up, and it was just very, very difficult. For three years, two to three years, I got phone calls and complaints about children being out in those trailers, and it, the calls and complaints did go down once they started to see the framework for the new high school, so there was light at the end of the tunnel. But our experience was not an ideal situation, not having water and sewer, and I would adamantly, anytime we have trailers, have water and sewer.
Thank you, I know my time is up. I guess many of us wish it was a bit different, much more safer place differently. Of course, the aesthetics looks pretty bad, we're paying a lot of taxes, and you drive by Monroe Middle School, you'll be thinking, wait a minute, is this the town I want to move in? But I guess putting all that aside, I think we have to trust that you have done the right risk-reward benefit analysis of putting in the sewer in the back and tying it up, maybe even pushing it by a year, that's why I asked my first question. So I guess we have to trust that you have done that risk-reward cost analysis, and you're comfortable with the risk and what have you with the kids, that this is the best outcome, because we have to live with it, I would say, for at least five years. And so we, the public, at least myself, I'm putting the trust on you that you have done that analysis and you feel that there's no other better solution, and this is the best thing, keeping the children in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, sir, and we are going to try to have a better aesthetically pleasing view from the road for the community, but we're focusing on function and... for the community, but we're focusing on function and safety first.
Got it. Thank you.
Venessing, Thirteen Jake Place. My question is, does anybody look into moving the administrative office, or some office to the trailer and seat of the classroom?
Oh, is it the, moving the, moving the offices into the trailers?
Yeah.
And then having the classrooms in the offices?
Right.
I'll let Mrs. Chanley speak to that.
And then another question to her only. I think like right now, she has decided to skip only two teams in the trailer?
Yes.
I'm thinking just revisit that logic. It was my personal feeling. Those two teams might feel, I don't know, like offended or something like that, they are not feeling good, that they always have to go to the trailer. Instead of, we can rotate it, that'll be good. So whatever like we decided, however decided, if it's possible to have some more discussion on that, that will help. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'll let Mrs. Chanley talk about the having offices in the trailers.
For anyone that's had an opportunity, I know some of the board members have, to come and view what we've done, we have pinched every single square foot out of that building. We have, I just recently relocated closets and made them offices, to be honest with you, for additional support staff. So it would have been impossible, if we moved our offices out, and let's say, our administrative offices, speech, guidance, the room capacity that we are in, if you saw it, does not fit classrooms. It wouldn't even fit small group instruction, but yet accommodate a class of anywhere between twenty-three to thirty. So that was not possible. That was definitely not possible. We did look at other scenarios. We did look at other scenarios. What would it look like if we put rural language outside, which I had a rural language trailer over at Applebach previously, rather than to do it as teams? We looked at so many different scenarios, because for us, the least upsetting way of doing it for our parents, for our public, for our children, is better for us. Less stress. So we wanted to make it that way. The only way it really worked to truly equally get class size down in all of the content areas was to place teams, because the way we are, we actually function as now a fourteen school, school. So in other words, your child's team has their own schedule, is almost functions as an individual school. So the only way that would make utilization of the best time for fifty-six minutes and have less children in and out on a, on a fifty-six-minute period was to place two teams out there. We did respectfully, we hear you, and we did look at it, we were thinking maybe a rural language trailer, things that were feasible that would work, and I can't speak yet, because I wouldn't think to speak for the children or the parents, but the activities and everything else that they're doing, it's really not going to be any different, because we're parted. So whether they walk out of the trailer classroom and walk, walk next door and walk across the hall for their, for a classroom pod, is not any different what they're going to do in the building, as far as large group instruction, activities, performances in the pack, any type of award ceremonies and activities that they do per team, everything is going to be treated identical to those teams that are in the building. There will not be any differences of any kind. As far as the classroom, the classrooms are just newer, actually nicer, in the trailers. Other than that, there will be no differences. They will not in any way, and I'm going to use the expression, be shortchanged. The activities that they have currently are going to be the same activities, whether they're on a team in the trailer or a team in the building.
Thank you.
I don't know if, if people realize, and I would be happy to have this discussion with people if they wanted me to, what goes into scheduling and classroom location is enormous. Today was the very first day that I could even allow the teachers back into the building, where I know elementary schools had opened up a little bit earlier. It is not feasible from an operational standpoint. I'm not even talking educationally. Right now, I'm talking actual management. If we had to move those and do a flip, let's say, nine weeks, like we used to do for the Mustang Cafe, before it was the Falcon Cafe, that was doable, because all we were doing was telling the children, eat in this cafeteria versus this cafeteria. If we were to change the teams, you're changing everything from the setup of the classrooms, the comfort level and the comfortability of children, children life routine, and that's the other part of it. So that would, for managerial purposes, it would not be a positive experience for the kids or for the teachers, and that is why we decided to place two teams out there and not do a rotation. Because once we're set, we give classroom keys, we give classroom information. Do teachers learn, you're worried about safety, they learn about protocol and routine and procedure as far as fire drill, evacuation, lockdown, shelter in place. All of these things, we train our teachers regularly and ongoing, based upon the location of where they are. So it would not have been feasible, or would have been in the best interest of the children from a safety point, operational point, educational or social, emotional, and that is why we need to do a rotation.
Mrs. Chanley, a teacher setting up a, their classroom in the trailer would do it the same way they would set it up if this
Identical.
Right.
Except everything they have is brand new.
Okay. That helps?
It's nice.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Krishna De Kalay, Love and Jake Place. You said, it was previously mentioned in this meeting that on, in January meeting, there was a discussion about the trailers, right? So I went back, last meeting, it was discussed. So I went back, looked at the agenda, and the Board of Education approved meetings. So if I was to recollect without looking at the agenda, I can recall three things from the January meeting. One, Dr. Kozak was given his notice letter. Two, the teachers did not have a contract. And three, we had a referendum in March. So anyways, going back, looking at the approved meeting agenda and the minutes, here's what is in the agenda. This is item P, Monroe Township Middle School Temporary Classroom Units. It is recommended that members of the Monroe Township Board of Education approve the submission of portable classrooms and cardio, cardiovascular PE trailers, SP number, as temporary space at the Monroe Township Middle School to the state of New Jersey. Department of Education School of Facilities for review as an other capital project. Furthermore, the Board of Education authorizes the amendment of the director's districts approved long-range facilities plan.
Correct.
Correct. So this was discussed, and it was no, at that point of time, it was not mentioned that these trailers are going to be on the parking lot where they are located.
The Board of Edu, oh, go ahead, if you
No, no, go ahead.
The Board of Education had received that information in their packet. We had been, they had received it before that too, because we talked about it numerous times over the past year and a half, with a diagram as to where those, those trailers would be placed. It was also available to the public who attended that evening. There is agenda, and then there's the follow-up backup information. So that information, including the diagram of where the trailers were going to be, was available to the public in January, when we voted on the trailers.
Right. Here's the question that I'm saying, but that doesn't, that, you know, the plan does not say, or the language here in the Board of Ed, meeting minutes, or the agenda does not say that this is where the trailers are going to be located. It says it is recommended that the member of, members of Monroe Township approve the, approve the submission of portable units. It's like, you know, hey, you're submitting for trailers for facilities, and everybody would look at it and say, yes, you know what, irrespective of where the referendum lands, we are going to have trailers.
Well, the
I mean, we are, we are dissecting legalese here, right? I mean, if you're trying to hang it on a legalese matter, that's fine.
Well, I believe any resolution goes through our board attorney, so she approves the resolutions, but the information, the backup information did go home to all the board members. So they should have had an understanding of what they were voting on
Okay.
...that evening.
Sure. And the other comment that I made last time, and I want to make it again, is, you know, there was no active involvement of the parent community asking them for feedback. A lot of the things that the parents had brought in, good, bad, or ugly, there were some options that were provided. Not necessarily all of them may be valid, but some of them were worth looking into. We should have had some parents come in and get this feedback to you, and saying that, you know, we've approved it, the Board of Members approved it, and it was not even on the edge. I mean, a lot of parents, that they came out and spoke in favor of the, in favor of the parents, Dr. Kozak, and their referendum.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gazala Bora, One Rico Drive. I want to start by apologizing. After last week's fifteenth August meeting, we found out that there was an aerial map in the meeting minutes and the meeting agenda that was circulated. I am apologizing because I, as a citizen, did not look into it. I did not pay attention. I knew the trailers were coming, they'd been coming for a long time, and I knew the board was voting on it, and the board did vote on it, and that would have been what I expected the board to do. Yes, please vote, because we need a trailer. I did not dig deep into it, I did not look at the aerial map. So I, yes, that was, I didn't do my due diligence. Had I seen the map, I would have probably made some noise then, and most of us would have made some noise then. So while we didn't do our due diligence, I have to say that the members of the board also didn't do the due diligence. And the reason I'm saying that today is because in July, when we actually realized where the trailers are going to be, and we signed a petition, two thousand people signed the petition, it was an issue then. And then the board also realized the need for the Jersey barriers. They realized that there was a security issue. Why was this not realized in January? I know you're elected officials, you all have your own lives, and you're volunteering your time, but there is a level of responsibility that is more yours than mine in this, in doing due diligence. This is the, this is the future of our town's children, this is their safety. A mistake has happened, and the board has scrambled in the past month, and I do appreciate the effort of the administrators. I would specifically say thank you to Mr. Goodall for taking the time to meet, I think, I don't know how many people he has met off late who've complained to him through emails and tried to put the concerns to rest. I do not doubt Mrs. Chanley's ability to handle the situation even for a second, because she has been handling a middle school with seventeen hundred kids seamlessly. So no, we do not doubt our educators, but we have been let down by the administration in approving a plan like this, and, and scrambling for something so last minute when the kids are going to be in it two weeks, two weeks later. I do am a little bit at peace with the road safety issue now, with the Jersey barriers. I know the cars can't directly get to the trailers anymore, so that is a little relieving. However, my security, safety concerns about a perpetrator throwing a stone in or shooting a gun in is still there. I still, as a parent, am going to worry about it. Just in March, we put, we decided to put armed guards in schools, and we have come to a point where most of our schools, all of our schools have armed guards. So now, the two questions I have is, the first one is, is there going to be an armed guard in the trailer?
Mrs. Chanley is shaking her head yes. Which is something that we would do, we, I think on our agenda tonight, we have three retired police officers on the agenda for approval. All of them will be armed, and I believe one of them will be in the trailers.
That does give me some peace. Now, the other question that I had in mind was that the vulnerability of the trailers is to the roadside, and the armed guard is probably going to have his desk facing the school, because he's going to be collaborating with the other guard on the other side. So is there, is there any possibility of having somebody do rounds?
I'm sure, yeah.
That's one of those, rounds off the trailer towards the street.
All our armed guards do rounds during the day throughout the building many times.
So there will be somebody walking. Wonderful. Now, my last question is the fire drills. How do we handle fire drills for students who are in the trailer?
Mrs. Chanley, would you like to respond to that one?
Our plans that we've been doing were not within the last couple of weeks, so we had, you know, we knew that the trailers were coming, so we sat down even before school ended. I actually met with Mr. Piero, and we discussed all of these things as far as scheduling of the children, changing the lunch schedule and so forth, so I did want everybody to know that, that's something that we did even before any meeting took place. We went ahead and addressed the fire drills. The only difference really is that that used to be one of the locations where we were allowed to do our fire drill, as well as our evacuation drill, because we also do a bomb threat drill, so we do the mandated, plus usually a few extra, drills monthly. So now what's going to happen is the children that would normally be standing where the actual trailers are, are now going to go to the turf field, along with the children in that building. For those of you that may have gone by recently, although we're going to be using the front entranceway, so that's the entranceway that would be facing, on the closest side, I should say, to the main entrance, with the long spiral, because that's what's going to have the canopy over it, that particular area will be the natural egress. However, during a fire drill, we're going to sit down and also go through the fact that we split up the building, just like we do now, and we have four classrooms that will go out the back, four classrooms that will go out the front, and then, once again, they will only be on sidewalks. So it is not going to cause any threat of any kind. We will follow the same procedure that we do now. The children will exit the building, I'm calling it a building, because I want them to feel like it's going to be their home, so they will exit that building, and they will follow the same exact line of retrieve, retrieval and removal, except instead of walking back toward the front, they come down the ramp, they follow the walkway, which is the actual, which has been there, it's our sidewalk, all the way down, and then they'll follow the rest of the children that are going out towards the, which is actually the soccer field, our turf field that we refer to is actually our soccer field. And we've made those changes, and we'll follow the same guidelines. The fire department does come in, they go over our egress maps, they go over our, which is also visual to the children, and then, of course, we practice it with the kids. So it's not going to affect us at all, it's just a different space that the children will go to.
Thank you, Mrs. Chanley.
You're welcome.
You can ask a question if you have, because your time is
Just thirty seconds. Thirty seconds. Thank you, Mrs. Chanley, just thirty more seconds. Since this has been done in such a rush, and there are still parents not very convinced, I just wanted to make a suggestion that if a committee could be set up after a month or two, after the school starts, of parents whose kids are in the trailer, and get a feedback as to what the comfort level is, how the children are dealing with this, and maybe if needed, if this needs to be rethought, then we have the whole year to plan that. I know nothing can be done for this really, but I, I would like to suggest as a parent, I, my kid is not a seventh grader this year, but I feel like if my kid was a seventh grader, I would have liked to revisit this a couple months after school starts, a small committee with parents whose
That, that would not be a problem.
Wonderful. And the last suggest, request that I have for the board now, that this has happened, this is behind us. We have bigger problems, bigger fish to fry in this district with referendums coming up for high school extensions and new middle school. I feel like there should be more deliberation at every process. There is a lot of things that are sliding through the cracks, and then there is major approach happening every time. I feel like we need to be a little bit more transparent, if possible, and more due diligence on both our part and your part, because we are going through some challenging times in our town, and we'll get through this, but we need to get through this without all the drama that's happening around everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I will say too, all of our committee meetings are open to the public. We do our deliberation during our committee meetings, because it's, it lacks a quorum, so we can't make any, we can't vote on committee, so we bring that to the full board, but the deliberation part happens in all our committees. So anybody in the public is welcome to attend, anyone except for personnel.
Can I just make a quick comment about that?
Can we go through the
All right, but I need to comment exactly what you just said.
Okay, go, go ahead.
Just very quickly. We do have limit, and taking a member of the public's advice, one of the problems with the committees is that they're only an hour, and very often
Michelle, talk closer to the microphone.
Very often, we are rushed through, and we can't get to the details very often of it. And don't forget, we're not supposed to micromanage the district, so a lot of times, we're told that we just have to take the recommendations of, you know, the supervisors or administrators or things like that, and sometimes we don't get all of the details that we've asked for. And so I would, I hope that, that we open that up a little bit more, and maybe we need more time in committees. We can't just have an hour sometimes. Sometimes we're talking about very important things.
And I agree with you, because I know that even policy, we've had special policy meetings this year, and we don't have enough time. So it's something that I think we need to look at, starting in September. Maybe we need two days of committee meetings, and have them go an hour and a half.
That, that might
Because that, I know that has been an issue in the past.
Yeah. And sometimes, and deliberation is good in committee meetings, but the Open Public Meetings Act, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes, the Open Public Meetings Act does require that we deliberate in public. We can't just vote yes or no. I mean, we can, and a lot of municipalities and a lot of Board of Educations just have yes votes or no votes, and mostly just yes across the board, but that's not really a democratic process. And the Open Public Meetings Act says, sometimes we have to take long meetings and deliberate and give everybody, all board members, a chance to express their, their views, so to that point.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Maul Klein, Seven Crenshaw.
Mark Klein, Seven Crenshaw. Even though I did say, three months ago, I'd never come back to a meeting, I'm here. I have been watching the meetings, and I just want to start off by saying, Dr. Goodall, you look perfect there. Okay? So I just want to let, when you have to get a superintendent, that's my man. Concerning the trailers, and maybe Mike can answer this, isn't it true that the state will only allow you to use a trailer for five years?
That is correct.
Okay. We know how long it takes.
Do you want to add to that?
No, you answered it.
We know how long it takes to build a school.
Right. They're temporary structures, their county approves them for five years.
Yeah, great county. I love the county. The other thing is, New Brunswick, a number of years ago, they closed one of the schools, one of the old schools, to build a new school, and they went to an industrial park. And they broke down the warehouse into classrooms with a lobby. If somebody blindfolded you and walked you into the building, you swear you would win, you would be in a regular, a regular school. And I was wondering, I know how expensive it is for the trailers, setting them up, getting rid of them. That is something that I would look into. The other thing I do want to say is that I was on the board, I guess it was 2009, 10, and 11, going into 12, I guess, and the only thing that we had concerning the increase in school population was the redistricting, if you remember that. And we knew at that time, and it's probably around 2010, we knew at that time we were going to have a problem. And, you know, with all due respect, I blame the problem on whoever the president was of the board and the board, because the superintendent is to be led. In other words, you set goals for the superintendent. And the superintendent that we had before Dr. Kozak did not want to get involved in new schools or referendums. So the problem that we find ourselves in now is that nobody forced the issue. And we had in that time Ms. Kaponovich, and we had maybe three other presidents, and nobody really addressed that problem. And now we find ourselves in a hole. The last thing, which I probably should talk about later on, as of, I think it was in the Asbury Park Press or the Sentinel last week, there are now 95 school districts suing the state for more money. And some of them get a hell of a lot more than we do. Freehold Borough had 1,700 students, so we're getting 9.7 million when we were getting less than 3 million. They now got another million. Before Christie left, we got what, 200 and some odd thousand? Yes, we did get more money now. Nowhere near enough for 6,700 kids, and God knows what the new, the new deal is going to be. But I would hate to have to be in your seat, all of you. And I can only say, you know where I come from, I call a spade a spade. But our backs are against the wall, people, and I don't know what you can do. And what's going to wind up happening, and I know my time is up, what's going to wind up happening is what happened with Freehold Borough. When they had two referendums voted down, the state came in and ordered the school board to sell bonds to build a new school. So what's going to happen is we're in such bad shape as far as school population and overcrowding, that I wouldn't be a bit surprised to see the state come in and say, Monroe Township, sell bonds. And I believe the figure is 225 million to build the two schools and the addition on the high school. Good luck. I don't know what you got to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else from the public wishing to speak in regard to the trailers?
Ambika Sukla, Two Sierra Court. The first thing I would like to talk about is transparency. You mentioned that, yeah, we did have the location of the trailers attached to some agenda that was given on that particular day. So whoever came, they must have received it somehow, you know, they should have come back and protested and so on. If the fact that, that they, the location, well, if, if location itself was on the agenda, like Krishna pointed out, I would have been in that meeting. It was never put in the agenda. So I, of all the things you said, you spent 10 minutes talking about the chronology. Nowhere did I hear you say that we went out to the public and we said that this is where the trailers are going to be, and the public agreed, or they brought their questions and so on. That's the reason why there was so much of surprise when people suddenly, when they put the trailers there, everybody thought that it's temporary, they're going to pull them back. And then next thing is, they move them near the road, which was shocking to everyone. So that's number one. I believe that we are grossly lacking transparency in this school district. The second question I would like to ask is, when was the last time, when in Applegarth Road, trailers were there, how far off they were from the road? And the third thing I want to talk about is, I know that if I go to the zoning board tomorrow, and I put in a request to have a shed put right next to the street lamp, it's going to get rejected, right? We're going to have 30, not 30, I mean, it's probably 100 kids sitting right, the lamp is stuck to the trailers, right? And I heard earlier today that that is safe, right? For the record, I want to say that I completely disagree with that statement. Again, I don't want any more answers on that, I just want to say I totally disagree with that statement. I'm sure if you go to, and you just mentioned that, we, you know, it was not required to get zoning permit for this, obviously, I mean, that's very convenient, right? If I go and get zoning permit for something like that, immediately it's going to get rejected. So I just don't understand how that's possible, right? That's all. I mean, so the only question, I mean, I'm not looking for any answers from you, I think I got, got the point, you're going to say something, that's not going to answer my questions. The only specific answer I'm looking for is, when was the last time we had trailers 20, 25, or 30 feet from the road?
I, I would have to ask Mr. Tagg, but I don't know when the last time they were that close to the road was.
So when, the trailers on Applegarth Road, where were they?
We had to, so they were on the, well, they were at-
They were on the, yeah, towards the side and the back.
So just for the record, there is no precedent of having trailers this close to the road?
The waters.
And, and you just said that you're very comfortable managing a situation like this? Well, clearly, it's the first time you want to do it, right?
What I said was, for purposes of eyesight-
Right.
-when the trailers were set up, did not have one, two security guards, maybe three in the whole building. They came and went, they came and went. Now, when I wasn't speaking about traffic, I would have to follow bars. I was speaking specifically about my comfort level as building administrator, knowing that the eyesight allows for the visual observance of children to and from. I was not in any way making comparisons, I apologize, I'm not making comparisons of the safety of the trail location to the traffic. I was making a safety reminder, the safety of being able to physically see children come to and from them.
I just want to clarify something too. What was I, the, the, one of the reasons, one of the major reasons they're put where they are is because of the water and the sewer hookup, and the fact that the kids did not need to go in and out of the buildings all day long to go to bathrooms. This included the bathroom facilities, this was the best spot to put those trailers in, and we considered this many times over the past year and a half.
All right, thanks. I just want to end, again, that for the record, I do not believe the, you know, sticking a trailer right next to the lamp can be safe from a-
We have the approvals from the county, and we have the approvals from the state.
And second for the record, again, that there has been no precedent of trailers being this close to the road, and, you know, the public was not notified about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just going to, since there are three more people online, after that, we're going to close off the trailer discussion, because it'll be an hour of Mr., well, four people, and then we're closing off the trailer discussion. So, I'm going to close it off at 8:15, because that will be over an hour of discussion on the trailers. Mrs. Skirby?
Good evening, Mrs. Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. I just, you know, hearing about the transparency, we could have done a better job alerting the parents. We have a Falcon Flyer that we've utilized for countless emails about going, getting out last year for the referendum vote. It's been utilized inappropriately sometimes to send out information to the district. Clearly, the district could have sent out a Falcon Flyer that goes home to every parent with that schematic and with an understanding of where the trailers were going to go. That would have been transparent. What went on, saying that it was part of an agenda, hidden, you had to go online to download the aerial, that is not being transparent. We've had presentations here, when we were going through the referendum process, we saw what the outlay for the high school addition was going to look like, we saw what the middle school addition was going to, or new middle school was going to look like. You could have had a presentation what the trailers were going to look like. Couple of questions. I know lunch came up at the Buildings and Grounds meeting. I guess it's a question for Mrs. Chanley. Will the children in the trailers, the two teams, will they be eating lunch at the same time, in the same cafeteria as the rest of the seventh grade? They will. Will that lunch period be extended for them to get out to the trailers and then back, back from lunch?
Mrs. Chanley, would you mind standing up at the microphone so everyone can hear?
That lunch period will consist of all the seventh graders, which would be basically the same size, maybe a little bit larger, but we've fed up to 610 children previously that were eighth grade, I think is now your junior class. So what's going to happen is, we will do exactly what we do regardless of whether or not we would have trailers. The first couple of weeks of school, we're physically in there, we say, children, don't leave, make sure you eat. And then what we do is, we sit down and we sit, we speak with the security guards as well as the teachers that have duty that period, and we talk about how long did it take them to get in the building, how long did it take them to get their lunch, how long did it take them, and we see what needs to be changed. There were about, I want to say, one year, we had probably up to three months of children that we extended the lunch period if necessary. So that's a good question, and absolutely. So we're going to evaluate it. We're going to actually see. They will make sure, they will be given adequate enough time to get their food, eat, just like any other child, and to get back out to the trailers. And if we need to extend it by a few minutes, then it'll be extended, because lunch will take precedence, for sure.
Thank you.
And my other question is about pickup at the end of the day. How will the pickup work? Because I know when the bell rings, the students all come out, and if they're getting picked up, they meet at the flagpole, or they go to the buses. If they're in the trailers, how will that take place? Because you, if you've ever been to pick up at the middle school, the parking lot is a nightmare. It's very dangerous now. And the concern is, how will the children, what will the process be for the cars coming into the, into the parking lot and the children crossing to go to their buses?
Okay, we already worked that out, and actually, it's not any different, I'll tell you why. The lack of safety, unfortunately, it is the behavior of the parents. I don't mean anything disrespectful, but if you're in, we're not, we don't tell parents what to do. You know, we tell children what to do. So the parents park, we would hope that they park appropriately, they remain near their car, get out of their car at the appropriate time, and then go over to the flagpole. To answer Mrs. Skirby's question, it's really very simple, it's not going to be any different. What's going to happen is, the children are in the trailers. We are going to, we've already mapped it out, I actually walked it with Mr. Tagg and then my assistant principal. So there's going to be a spot in the middle where no longer going to have a bus pull up there. So for those of you that are picker uppers, which is the cute way that I say it, when you pick up your children now, there is a space in front of the student main entrance way where the children are the only space. So they are permitted to then be escorted. It's usually Ms. Herker, but it can be a different security guard, but she's the one that happens to do it. They are actually escorted. There is like a double wide space where, let's say, a bus plus space on each right and left side normally would be, and they are escorted directly to the flagpole. The children in the trailers will never cross over back to the building. So if you could picture this, they are going to come out of one entrance way, which is the front designated entrance way that I said had the swirly, a little bit more of a swirl to it as far as the ramp. They will come out, out that ramp. They will then, they are taking a bus home. They will then, once again, be escorted. It'll be the same designated space which we've had for the last seven plus years for the children to go to their parents. They will then be escorted. We'll have our normal teachers out there, administrations out there, as well as our securities out there. They walk to the middle, and then they find their bus. The children that are being picked up will never do that. They will stay on the sidewalk, on the opposite side of the fence that currently exists. They will walk down the sidewalk, and they will walk to the flagpole. Instead of coming to the flagpole this way, they come to the flagpole this way. So they're not going to experience any traffic. Although we had extra spots that were left over, Mr. Tagg and I had this discussion, and we both agree that there will be no parking, including myself, administration, there will be no parking in the entire area that now are where the trailers are, except for overnight bus parkings, which we discussed. So there is no reason, if there's a parent, they will not be permitted to pull in there under any circumstances. So the children literally are going to walk down the sidewalk. So what you're picturing, don't picture, they're not coming towards the building again to be escorted back. They walk down the sidewalk, and they walk directly to the flagpole. So actually, they're only going to have to deal with probably 40 kids rather than, let's say, the 100 kids that are picked up, because they're almost their own, they have their own private walkway. No one, no child who's not in the trailer is going to walk to that area to then walk to the flagpole. They're coming from two different directions. I tried to do it visual, I apologize, to help you understand what it would that would look like.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's still be that roadway, though, that separates, so they come down.
Yeah, but they're not walking in that roadway. So in other words, here's, that'll still be the same. What happens is, you walk down, you know how we have a-
Close to the mic.
We have, I apologize. We have the sidewalk. So you know where the sidewalk ends? Where the sidewalk ends, if I'm not mistaken, and Mr. Tagg, correct me, that's where you start having that patchy grass, and that's where the flagpole is. If you picture it. So when you walk down, when you walk down, right, so you have the flagpoles-
Maybe we need to have a presentation over there on how that would work.
Well, as Mr. Goodall did say earlier, we're waiting, of course, to follow the proper logistics and CBO.
Right.
And that is why we couldn't do anything in advance. But two things are going to happen. Number one, when all of the, we do a 6-12 continuum, and we've done this for many years, where once the portal's open, we send our welcome, we send our Connect Five, we let you know the portal's open, you go online, you see what team your child has, you see the classrooms. So right there, we're also going to put in a little verbiage that I wrote that's going to say, those, any child who's placed on two teams that are going to be in the trailers, you're going to meet us in the path. So the administration's going to meet the children to both hold it in the path. Additionally, as, you know, fingers crossed, everything being done appropriately, timing, it is tentatively scheduled that we'd like to do for those children, once again, that will have their schedule, that will be in the trails. We're going to myself, my administration, certain teachers that are going to be in the, out of the trailers, as well as Mr. Goodall, so that he would love to come. We're going to be there to do an orientation. We're looking at probably the day before only because of timing constraints.
Go ahead.
And that is tentative.
Thank you.
So people will have more comfortable.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I'd like to get, since, yeah.
I just wanted to say thank you, Mrs. Chanley. I know that she's doing everything in her power to make sure it's safe, and I know the parents do trust you.
Yeah, we, we understand and appreciate that ourselves. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Barbara Lee from Monroe. My child is entering the middle school. I have great anxiety and stress about him going into a trailer. I want to know what you're going to do about gun safety, because anyone could drive by and shoot up those 10 cans on the side of the road. That's a reality of today. You didn't take that into consideration. My child's safety is a lot more important than what it would cost you guys to run a waterline to the back of the school. I also would like to know, how much would it cost to run a waterline because you're putting in barriers, you're putting in a fence, and you're putting in trees? Why not run a waterline and put our kids in a safe position?
Mr. Tagg, would you like to answer the question about the cost of putting the trailers in a different spot and, and-
I don't have a cost for that, but-
Okay.
So if these kids get shut up, what's the cost worth to you guys? Because it's my child who's going in these trailers.
We're doing everything we possibly can. We're working with our Director of Security to make sure that-
A barrier is not going to stop a bullet. And that's the reality of today.
And that, I would say, is any school, is that-
Not a brick and mortar school. You ever shoot at a tin can? I have.
We're putting two rows of barriers and a steel fence.
Okay. Again, and now you want people to vote for a referendum, where you're putting our children in harm's way, and you think you're going to get a referendum voted? Just saying. I mean, you guys have to think of the reality. You're putting our children in danger, and you don't seem to worry about that.
Oh, I, I would not say that we don't worry about that. We're all considered-
If you were, if you were doing the right thing, you'd be moving those trailers. Because my other children went to schools in the trailers, and never were they on the road. That's all I have to say.
Good evening, I'm Paul Lima. My question is, how are you going to arrange the children with disabilities, or that, the children that have health concerns, the children that don't want to walk in the cold? My son suffers with asthma, and cold is the biggest trigger he has. How would he probably walk all the way to the nurse, to the main building, when he's suffering with asthma and cold is a trigger? Time is an essence. Call it EpiPen, call it his spray, you know, he has to be in the main building. How are you, how are you managing it? Why does a child have to walk in the cold every day for his lunch? Considering it's a decent space between the trailer and the main building, when it's cold, it's not, I mean, it's not good for the children to walk like that. And as the mother that spoke before me said, yes, I have that concern that there might be a shooting, and it's really not safe. Safety is my child's, for, I mean, it's my primary concern.
I believe, Mrs.-
I believe Mrs. Chanley said at the beginning of the meeting that their medical issues will be taken into consideration, and there will be times where a medically needed child will be in the building and not in a trailer, if that is the necessity, or an IUP, or a medical condition that needs to be in the building and not in the trailer. Thank you.
Good evening, Andy Plori, 16 St. James Street. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I want to thank the administration and the Board of Education for allowing my daughter to graduate. I just dropped her off at TCNJ. I'm a proud president of a junior or freshman at TCNJ today. Thank you very much. But this is the first time I learned that the seventh grader are actually going to the trailers. And my second daughter happens to be a seventh grader. Yes, I share the same concern everybody else is sharing in terms of safety. But after I heard what I heard at the grounds and buildings presentation, I'm a little more comfortable than I was before when I first saw the trailers out there. I think the trailers are trailers, they are where they are right now. Whether we like them or not, I don't think it's going to, anything is going to happen about moving those. But my concern is, what is it moving forward that we need to do? So the question that I want to ask the, maybe the super today is, at the pace at which we're going, the referendum's still in the works, when would the high school need trailers? Because it will be the same scenario in two, three years from now. If we don't get the referendum passed, more trailers in front of the middle school and new trailers in front of the high school, then we'll be sitting here and arguing about the same thing all over again. I think we need to come here, whether you're speaking out of the podium or sitting there as a board member, we've got to look for solutions, not just for problems to come and complain here. I think this complaint got to stop, and we've got to come together to pass the referendum so that our students deserve what they need to get out of it and get out of the trailers as quickly as possible. So my question still remains, what would be the high school's threshold before we start putting trailers in front of high schools?
Mr. Goodall, do you have an answer for that?
I would probably, we would have to work with the high school administrative team to do a study, considering class sizes, hallway flow, use of the cafeteria, use of the gymnasium, use of the pack, to do a study and come back and report out on that. All I know is, once I became part of the steering committee meeting as the high school principal, when all of the facts and figures were presented to me, certainly I was first there to advocate, let's build an addition to the high school first. I wound up walking out of there and supporting a referendum for a middle school because I was convinced that was our greatest need. This building allowed...
You're not threatened, you were just convinced? I'm surprised, because somebody told me you were threatened to say so.
I was the tallest guy in the room, so I was convinced.
I'm the strongest guy, too. Thank you.
We're all collaborative here, and so I supported the middle school referendum. And certainly, I'm still going to be a part of whatever decision we need to move forward. We would have to study that with the high school, so I couldn't answer that today. But adding trailers to the footprint of the high school would be extremely problematic as well. It could be for other reasons, maybe not access to water and sewer, but certainly parking, high school student parking, elimination of spots, a lot of, ban practice areas, a lot of things to consider. So I couldn't answer that now, but certainly we could, as, with the high school administration, look at that and have some answers moving forward.
Yeah, I want to be respectful for people who are standing behind me, so I want to move along. So if you could get that information, I'm sure every parent who's sitting here has a need to understand that and when that's going to be coming, if that's going to come. Because we know that by the time the referendum passes to the time actually the school opens, we're looking at a good six to seven years at a minimum for that to happen. So if the referendum is still in flux, that's going to be a problem. Now, my last request before my time is up is, the discussion about how the circulation is going to work at the middle school, it would be beneficial for those who are not attending this meeting today to also understand Principal Chanley's discussion about how the kids move. If you can put something like that in Falcon Express, then it'll be helpful for everybody else to know that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our last speaker on the trailers?
Hi, my name is Ann Roman, I live at 434 Schoolhouse Road.
Could you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ann Roman, I live at 434 Schoolhouse Road. I'd like to start off by addressing the questions from everyone here about, about the trailers. I think they were really great questions, all well-thought-out and extremely valuable. However, we spent the first part of the meeting, listened to an extremely detailed list of all the meetings, going back to 2016. BGNT reports, emails that were sent, committee meetings, committee reports, approvals that were asked for and granted, all the reports that were in the newspaper, newspaper articles all over, contracts that were put out and then awarded, diagrams of the area provided, perhaps not in the way somebody may have wanted them. But we're going back to 2016 when this all appeared to have started. The location of the trailers at some point were not a secret. I would have liked to have thought, and 2,000 people signed a petition. I don't know, I don't know the exact population of this town or parents that have children in the school system. 2,000 just doesn't sound like a lot of people, and maybe I'm 100% wrong. I would just like to assume that people that are here with the questions, extremely valuable questions, were perhaps at the beginning, when this all started in 2016, and might have perhaps then been able to steer this in a different direction. I just feel as though the people here, we have to trust what they did. They've been doing this for a long time. They've been involved from the start, as we all have been, hopefully. And perhaps the last thing you have to trust is your child's ability to adapt. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goodall, would you like to make a comment?
Just in summary, so in speaking to members of the community, parents, receiving some emails, offline conversations, BGNT committee meeting, and now tonight, there seems to be a theme of planning and being transparent with parents and community. Certainly, we always take feedback. I did it as a high school principal, and will continue to do it as superintendent this year. One of the reasons we connected the trailers in that area was the connection. That was feedback from our experience with other trailer situations, particularly that building over there. So moving forward, I know the administrative team will certainly look at presenting, if we have to add more trailers, presenting a plan of its location and consider some of the security concerns that parents have. You know, looking at the timeline that Ms. Kalaponowicz read out today was before some of the incidents that we saw across the country in which, as parents, we, our concerns were heightened about school security and gun violence. So moving forward, I know the administrative team is willing for that. I can't speak for the board, but I'm sure they are, too. We're going to be looking and considering a lot of the considerations that we had tonight and that we've heard from parents at the BGNT committee and here tonight, moving forward, when we plan to add more trailers. I don't know if we will ever satisfy everybody's litmus test on that, but we will do our best to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Goodall. Okay, and now we'll go back to the...
Can we, are we, can we ask questions?
Oh, sure, Mr. Chiarella.
Well, I want to, I want to make a comment first. I want to thank you, Madam President, for having this and in your, in your, in your report, and inviting the public to ask questions. I think that was, and I think that was well-thought-out. I also want to thank Mrs. Chanley for coming in today and answering everyone's questions. We had a lot of questions last week at Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation, so I think this helps. What I'd like to do, though, since we're putting all the rumors to rest, I'd like to put all the rumors to rest myself. I'd like to make sure that everything is put to rest. So when we leave here today, there aren't any more rumors. So, you know, I've been challenged myself by members of the public who are saying that, saying things like, maybe we put the trailers there to sell the referendum to the public. So maybe the cost of those trailers was, was part of the selling tactic, to sell the referendum to the public, the need for just the middle school, for instance, instead of a comprehensive package of all our needs being addressed. So what I'd like to ask Ms. Chanley, if she's open to answering more questions, is, is this something that you requested? Is this, or the trailers, something that you felt that were needed? Did you think that, and I could ask these one at a time, but did you think that the creation of the new team and the disruption that that takes and the, you know, the outlay of, the outlay financially, the lunch schedule changes, and all of those things, that those were things that were definitely needed for this, this school year? And are you happy with what, you know, what we've done, as far as that's concerned?
And I'm going to speak very appropriately. So the previous superintendent, who was my immediate supervisor, came to me and said, you know, "How are things going?" I had, like I had said, he had properly walked a few of the different board members through my building. We are extremely crowded. Last year and the year before that, we had to go to a delayed bell schedule, which I also had to do in my previous building of Applebaum, which is really not what's best for children. So we had two different bell schedules because we couldn't have the children in the hallway at the same time. So it wasn't even a matter of construction at that point, it was just pure safety. And just give you a little background. So basically, we had to change the bell schedule to staggered, because children couldn't be in the same building. We then had to remove science teachers from science classrooms, and then make makeshift science environment classrooms in other wings in order to pad the building appropriately, because we had seven and eighth grade science classrooms in the same wing. And if you don't think that's a big deal, oh my goodness, when the bell rings, it is, because we couldn't have the children crossing over. We then had very open, transparent PTO meetings where the children were permitted to come, and they would give us some feedback on what it was like to go up and down the stairwells. So if you're asking me to trailers help, absolutely. If you're saying to me, and I don't want to speak without an individual who's not here, but basically, I was told, "Can you live without them?" My answer is always yes, because my answer is yes to everything. I can do everything I need to do to always make something work. That's just who I am. I started out in this district where there was 565 children in a seventh and eighth grade building. I am now the principal of 1,705, I asked my secretary as of today, 1,705 children in a building that was built for 1,200 children. So if they said, "There's absolutely no way we can have trailers, can you make it work?", the answer would have been yes. Would we have class size of 23 or 24? No. We would probably have class size, which we did, 31, 32. Additionally, if I had been requested to be on some of these committees to be part of the transparency of the trailers to maybe ease everybody's stress, like I'm hoping to do it tonight, I would have been. I was not requested. I am an individual who works for the parents, who works for the kids, but I also like to come when I am requested. I don't always feel it's appropriate for me to say things unless that's asked of me, and that was not asked of me at the time. So basically, to be specific to your question, I did not openly go and say, "Give me trailers." No, I did not. I did not openly say, "I have to have them." Am I glad I have them? Yes, I am. Do I think it's what's best for children? Yes, I do. Do I understand why they're in the front of the school? Yes, I do. I walked the entire outside, we used to call it the back porch. I walked it, Mr. Tague, physically walked it, and my ideal, of course, would have been there, and the question was, "I have to have water." I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, I am not a zoning planning person. I will not discuss any of those reasons why. I am only a human being that has worked with trailers in the past. I want to apologize to that gentleman if it came out the wrong way. I meant that I prefer these trailers because we can see. That's what I was, I was not referring to the traffic on the road. I was referring to having the ability, because security purposes of seeing children back and forth. But I will let you know that the one thing I did say is, I wanted water. As far as placement so forth and having to live with the trailers, I was told, I was asked by the previous, I don't know what else to say. How do you feel you could do with trailers? What do they look like? Who would you put in there? And we came up with maybe three or four different options for scheduling purposes. One of which was rural language trailers, which I did have at the previous school. What that looked like. Then we started doing a synopsis and a data analysis of how many times children would be going in and out, what it looked like, and from a pedagogy of middle school, and I live, breathe, and eat middle school. For those who don't know me, I'm old enough to be a middle school kid. Placing the teams in the trailers, I still stand by is the best way. But one, I don't like to go backwards, because, no, I did not. I was not an individual that said, "Give me trailers," but I was also not an individual that said, "I do not want trailers," if that answers your question. I don't know if it does.
I, no, I just, I just wanted, for transparency's sake, I wanted to just have you on the record, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of rumors, and there's a lot of things that are out there. And I'm glad we were able to put those to rest. I will say, though, that I, my, my son is, is in your school, and I know that they're going to be chosen randomly. But I'd like to say, and I'd like to request this of everyone, because I've never asked for special favors for my kids, and I'm not going to start today, but I am going to ask you that if you could please make sure my son is in those trailers. I would appreciate that. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chiarella.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Chanley and Mr. Tague, for being here this evening and answering questions. I think it's been very helpful, and I hope that the parents go home with a better understanding of what's going to be happening at the middle school. And I know you're going to be reaching out to them through orientation and parent letters.
I really would like to, if possible, and I do think it's best, and I apologize, I...
Could you please, again, use...
Just so you know, and I referred to them all out, I received seven emails, including Ms. Perkins, and I am the type, for those who don't know me, to respond easily, very quickly, for those that know me even in the middle of the night. That being said, I really wanted to give the same answers to the questions to everybody this, for this particular evening. But I am happy to have anything that you feel is appropriate and any type of additional informational sessions, now that our building's open, because our building was closed officially. So I'm very comfortable doing that. And once the CBO is received, I would love to be able to also have additional orientation, preferably five, six, seven o'clock at night. We discuss six o'clock, like right in the middle, the night before, and I can send out a parent connect. And by then, I believe, on the 29th, the portal opens. So the parents that have children in the trailers will be aware of that. It would be my pleasure.
I'm sure Mr. Goodall will work with you, and...
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Russo?
Yeah, because not only Mr. Chiarella, but many people mentioned transparency and these rumors that are spreading around. And one thing I find is that, goes back to that document, that, the document of justification for the decisions, you have subject matter experts that are involved making important decisions. For example, in this case, it might have been Jerry Tague, who decided the trailers can go in this location. And he may have not been alone, but he was the key subject matter expert that decided that. But we don't have any documentation as to how these decisions are made and based on what. And this is what I find is the biggest problem here. The administration, because before, the board always gets blamed, and I'm really tired of that. We vote yes or no based on recommendations from the superintendent. And I don't want to say we can assume that the subject matter experts are making the proper decisions, but Mr. Goodall should, should make sure they do. There should be checks and balances to make sure that those decisions that they make are the right decisions, because we can't make them. We can only ask questions. Now, you had Director of Security meeting with the school principal. Nothing wrong with that. They discuss certain things. Nothing's documented. So that's what happens. People come in and they say, "No, we did this, and we did that," but nothing's documented. So the story can change from, you know, this month to January. It might be a different story, and that's why everybody gets confused.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Okay, now, at this time, we're going to get back to our regular agenda, because we're only on number six. We're going to go to the approval of minutes for the first, for the Special Public Board of Education meeting of May 23, 2018. Moved by Mr. Chiarella, second by Mr. Ryback. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Yes.
Ms. Arminio?
The May 23 previous special public meeting minutes failed at a previous meeting. I would ask that, under the motion on page two, where it says, "Under motion to become a member of Fair Funding Action," the third paragraph, "I objected to 'after much deliberation,'" and this sort of goes to what we've been talking about. "After much deliberation" is not detailed enough to provide the Open Meetings Act requirement of reasonably comprehensible language. I believe some comments from board members provides important insight into policy formation and decision-making, and that does, that is not shown in, in this, in these minutes. And I would also ask that the comments from the members of the public be more verbatim and less interpretive. So I really, on this one, don't have specific, except that I, I do object to the way it's written. So I'll just be voting no. But in the future, I would like to have, instead of just saying, "There's much deliberation," because if, like we have talked about, if we have to go back to January meeting, and the only information on here is that, "Through much deliberation," the public is not aware of what kind of deliberation has gone by, and I think it's important that they need to know... And I think it's important that they need to know what certain members say. I mean, and I know we can't do a verbatim. I mean, actually, years ago, we used to have a verbatim minutes so that you could go into the board office and read every single detail. And I thought that was wonderful, maybe expensive, I don't know. But, but cutting it down to just making a statement after much deliberation, I think does not go far enough for, for the public to go back in time and see what each board member did. So that's just on this one.
Thank you. We will note your comments in the record.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Ms. Arminio opposes, abstain, or recuse? Okay. Then the closed session meeting of May 23, 2018. Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback, any additions or corrections to the, Ms. Arminio?
Yes, again, this failed in a previous meeting because I objected to it, where the discussion
We're not allowed to disclose the discussion that happened in, in closed session.
Well, if we're voting
We are not allowed to discuss what the conversation was in closed session.
Well, I disagree. That's my point.
According to our attorney, we are not allowed to discuss what the discussion was in closed session.
Well, I think what I have given you, are you telling me that what I handed out before the meeting, you are, you're saying that I cannot read this part?
I am saying that.
You are.
And first of all, you, this came to us right before
That's correct.
And I don't think that everybody's had that opportunity to, to really read this.
Well, we, we tabled it last meeting.
I, I understand.
I think what I'm saying, you know, closed session minutes and things that are confidential are supposed to protect the privacy of people and I get that. I'm all for confidentiality appropriately. However, again, the public has a right, after a resolution has been, after things have been resolved, the public has a right, and I advocate for this very strongly, to know exactly what went on. If there is somebody's name that has to be eliminated or if some, something that is a confidential, it, the, the public has a greater right to, in my opinion, on this one, to know what went on than confidentiality is in this. I don't think I have in, in this, that anything was done. My objection to the last meeting was that
I, I, I
I'm going to read, you have this as a, as an approved minutes. You have the 20, May 23, closed session, the previous one in our packet, this is, these are, these are the words that were going to be voted on. You, so I couldn't read, you're telling me that I couldn't read that Ms. Smith noted concern regarding
Yeah, according to Mrs. Smith, she said that you should not have been saying that at the last meeting.
Okay.
And I don't want to go into this, this is
Of course you don't. Of course you don't. Okay. But let me ask a question. Once these minute, meeting minutes are approved, these are, these, the one, the one I'm holding in my hand, not the one that I wrote, the one that I'm holding in my hand, these typed minutes, once these are approved, these are available under the Open Public Records Act for the public to see.
They're not approved yet. They're not approved.
Well, you're asking me if I'm going to approve it, and in order for me to approve it, I would like an addition to the minutes. I don't understand why I can't tell you what the addition should be.
Because according to our attorney, you cannot discuss what happened in closed session.
Well, no, I, I, for members of the public, confidentiality is very important to me and I will always play by the rules, even if it hurts me specifically. However, I am going to, again, say that, then we'll table this particular one again until the board attorney reads this. And I think we are subject to lawsuits from the public because we are not allowing transparency.
Well, you would need a motion to table.
Madam, may I say something?
Yes, please.
I was not the minute keeper for these, but I would, I would like to say that we have a policy on when minutes have to be approved. We could also lose Q Sac points. If you would like content in closed session minutes to be changed before they're approved by the board, by all means, you have every opportunity to contact the other board members or administration to make a change ahead of time. We could send out confidential revised minutes if, if it's warranted to all the members and then you could feel comfortable approving it.
Well, I would love to do that. I would love to have all the time in the world that I do not, because I am a full-time worker, to do this. And unfortunately, sometimes I have to do things at the last minute. As we receive things, I received additional board agenda today at 2:01, so PM. So, I mean, yeah, a lot of things can be done in advance and I agree with you, but unfortunately, I have time constraints as well. However, to be compliant with confidentiality, I will, again, but you see, here's what's going to happen. If the rest of the board members approves this, then whatever I have down here is not going to be included in the minutes and then I have to live with that. So that's my problem.
Ms. Arminio, at the last minute, meeting, you, you objected to this also.
That's correct.
You were requested to speak, to speak to Mr. Ryback since he took the minutes of the meeting that evening. You never reached out to him?
Okay.
That's a month ago and we just got this today as we were starting our meeting.
You're absolutely correct.
So if you want to make a motion to hold this again, we, you could make a motion, see if it's second and we vote on that. Otherwise, we need to get moving with these minutes.
But I, I would like it very clearly stated in the record for tonight's minutes that there is nothing, I believe there is nothing in my position here that says that is particularly confidential. And I would never breach confidentiality. However, I'm going to play by the rules, let you do what you, you want to do, and then I'm going to submit this to the board for, for, for open public records. And if the attorney wants to say that, that she has to redact any of this, then that'll be on her. Okay?
Okay. So we're, we're, the closed session meeting of May 23, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you please?
I want to be opposed.
Oppose.
Follows.
Would the opposing members please raise their hands so I can note it in the minutes?
Okay, at the closed session meeting of June 7?
I have a question.
Ms. Arminio?
Can Don and Frank vote on the minutes because they were accused from the meeting?
Um.
We were there.
You were there?
Yes.
Okay. Because it says you dismissed him.
This is where I never know what we're supposed to do because sometimes we're there for a little while and then we leave, so.
It wasn't advertised as a meeting when we went in that room. Let's
Well, the first part of it, they were, they were in, involved in the discussion. On the second part, you may have, you, you can have an objection to that.
So actually, if I remember correctly, Mrs. Smith took the opportunity before we left to make some comments.
I, I would have to go back and look at them all because
That's why we were there.
Okay.
So I think we're up to the closed session meeting of June 7. Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback, any additions or corrections?
Does, well, President Kalpanowicz, do you have an objection to my two sentences? Because I'd like to put that into the minutes. I don't think there's anything confidential in that. I think that shows what we did.
I, does anybody have an objection to that?
One for June 7?
Yeah.
Yeah. No, that's fine.
Okay. Then I would like to put in there that interviews were conducted, that the members present did not come to a consensus on acting internal candidate and then no action was taken. I think that's an accurate addition.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
With that addition.
Abstain?
Recuse.
Both of you are recusing. Okay? Mr. Russo, Ms. Corinos, recusing. Okay, the, I think, closed session meeting of June 13, 2018.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Mayo, additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Arminio is opposing. Abstain?
Recused.
Are you recusing or abstaining? Recuse. Mr. Russo and Ms. Corinos, recusing.
Madam, may I make request for accountability and minute keeping? When the members vote affirmatively on the minutes, we need some kind of reaction from everybody, otherwise it's to be included as a no vote.
Maybe we'll just have a hand.
Not a no vote, but not casting a vote.
Okay. Maybe we'll have a hand.
So we need some kind of response to approved, not approved.
You want us to verbalize that? Say approved?
Some kind of reaction so we can go back on the tape and definitively see how the members voted on the minutes.
Okay, that was June 13. The Special Board of Education meeting for June 14.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback, additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Recuse. Mr. Russo is recusing. The closed session meeting of June 14.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback, again, additions or corrections to those minutes? Ms. Arminio?
My only, my only opposition to this is the June 14, we enter, it was the superintendent evaluation by title. We entered into the discussion at 8:15 PM. We didn't finish until 10:00 PM and the closed session minutes are 74 words. So we were there an hour and 45 minutes and 74 words to describe what went on for an hour and 74 minutes, so I'll be voting no.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed?
Aye.
Ms. Arminio? Abstain or recuse?
Recuse.
Recuse and recuse.
So moved.
Okay, the Public Board of Education meeting of July 18, 2018.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback, again, any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You weren't there.
Recuse.
Opposed? Ms. Arminio is opposing. Abstain? Recuse.
Recuse.
Mr. Rotsky is recusing. Okay, and the last one is the closed session meeting of July 18.
So moved.
Mr. Chiarella and Mr. Ryback, additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Arminio? Abstain?
Recuse.
You're abstaining, you're recusing. Ms. Corinos is recusing.
I too will recuse.
And you will abstain or recuse?
Elect early.
No, you can abstain.
I'll abstain.
Yeah.
Ms. Russo?
He voted, he voted yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Korski, did you still last?
July 18, I have Ms. Arminio as opposed.
That's correct. And actually, I made a mistake on the, hold up. I was going to vote on the pub, the Public Board of Education meeting, July 18, I was going to vote yes. I think I, I said no.
You did.
I will change that to, that's a yes.
It is noted, Public Board meeting, July 18, Ms. Arminio casts a vote as
Yes. It is the closed session meetings that I say no.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, since our students are not here in the summer, they will be back in September. We will greet a new student board member. We'll go to committee reports. Mr. Chiarella?
Yes, thank you. We had a Buildings, Grounds and Transportation meeting on 8:15, so I'm going to read briefly, I'm not going to read the whole thing because we had a long, it was a long meeting, we covered a lot of topics, but I want to explain as best I can the things that we did go through, go over. So the, we, the number one was Brookside School HVAC upgrades and the project status. So the administrative, administration provided overview of the project, highlighting that boilers, hot water heaters have been installed and they'll be ready for the operations, they're op, they'll be operational for the start of school. There was also, we also had the delivery of several rooftop HVAC units and that will start to happen as soon as possible. And then the installations will happen, you know, over holidays, weekends and things like that to make sure that they go in without students present. The second thing was turf replacement projects. So we received an overview of the project noting that the replacement installation of the new synthetic turf fields at the Monroe, Monroe Township Middle School is substantially complete and that the students, the student athletes have started using the field this week. The athletic director will work with facilities to complete a punch list. So again, that was the, you know, this is, this is a non-toxic substitute for what we had before on, as turf. So it's, it doesn't heat like the, like the other AstroTurf did, which is better for the, for the students. And it also doesn't leach toxins into the ground, so it's non-toxic, which is, which was a big sell, you know, for us, it was a big selling point. So that is, that is nearly done. So we had a steering committee update for the bomb, bond referendum recommendation. And so the administration, the administration reported that the committee met several times since the failed referendum in March and concluded their meetings this past week, which was last week. And basically, what they came up with was, in, they expanded the, the meeting, the group, the steering committee, and what they came up with was a two-question solution to the bond referendum issue. So the first, one of the questions, the first question will be, middle school only. And the second question, which, well, let me, let me go back. The middle school question will be, well, the, the first question will be, middle school only, $75 million. So I want to get the dollar, the dollars out. And then the second question will be, middle school and high school together for a total of $146 million. So there are two different questions that'll be on the ballot and that'll be from March 2019 and our residents will have the ability to vote on that. If I may give my own opinion on this, I think that's very important that we, we have the high school and middle school together and that that passes because that's our, that's our need. We have a monumental need for, for space and if we don't do that, we're, we're going to be cutting our nose off to spite our face because down the road, we're going to be spending money on trailers and things like that to patch a Band-Aid and, you know, find small stopgap solutions to this problem that'll never end. So we, we need, we really need to push this hard and I would, I would implore the public to vote on the, both schools. The next thing that we discussed was the middle school trailer product, project and, you know, I was very, I was very happy to see the turnout. Unfortunately, you know, it was under this, under those circumstances, you know, so that people came out because they weren't happy, which is usually the case. That's when, you know, people are fired up to come out. They don't usually come out just to say, hey, you guys are doing a great job. They come out to say, you, you stink. And then they tell us why we stink and they, and then other people tell us and they keep going, which is fine. I think that's good. That's hard, that's democracy and that's really what makes us better. I will say that we got a lot of great ideas from that meeting, from our, from our residents, and I think that a lot of those, those ideas are being implemented, implemented in, to some degree. So over time, you know, we heard about, we heard about security concerns and things like that. I, I would like to say though, that, like, like we said earlier, we all own this decision. I would like to say, though, that, like, like we said earlier, we all own this decision, we all own what happened. Is it the best solution, that they're right where they are, and, no. The best solution would be that we didn't even need trailers, that we had a, a middle school referendum that passed, and an even better solution would be that our township would listen to our residents and stop building, and that they, and they would, you know, they would get the, they would get the development.
Excuse me, excuse me.
So I think that, I, you know, I think that, with that being said, you know, we're doing what we can do, and, and so we discussed that at length. Then the next thing that we discussed was the property for sale at 417 Bucklou Avenue. So it's, it's being listed by Matrix, and that's for, potentially for a bus depot. We have two different things that we're looking at. One is land being given to us by the township for a bus depot to expand what we already have, and then, I think it was Mr. Russo who brought up this, this land that's for sale right across from the board office, and so we were just looking into that. So there was nothing definitive, but it was a conversation, we were just looking at it, so, and, and, you know, more to come on that as we, as we move forward with the, with this, you know, with, with the land and the need for the bus depot and the development of that. And there's more on that shortly. The township, we also discussed the township use of buses, so I know, Mr. Braverman, you had asked about that. So the township has charged 79 cents a mile to use buses for summer recreation, our buses, district buses. And recreation programs like Mount Seepa Camp also use our buses, and they're charged at that rate. Now, in addition to the charge, they pay their own bus driver, or they pay for the bus drivers, so that's why it's a lower rate than when they use it for 4th of July and for Grandparents' Day and things like that, where we then charge the township a dollar 33 per mile for the use of the buses. So I hope that satisfies your question, I know it satisfied mine, and I was happy to see that we're charging, we're doing what we're supposed to be doing here, protecting the public's wallets. The next thing that we discussed was the middle school PSA, PTO, and that also was a pretty contentious debate, you know, we talked about various different things, and policy adjustments, and the need for whether or not we needed to go back to policy, or whether this had to go to a full board. Many of us felt that we, that it, that the decision to grant, to grant Class 1 status rested with the superintendent and the building administrator, for instance. Other, you know, other members thought that it rested with the Board of Ed. So we were debating that, and I think that that's probably something that we should debate now, because as far as, I've been on the board on and off for almost nine years, I guess, a little over eight years, and I've never, I've never seen us, okay, or approve a parent group, you know, and, and now there's a parent group in the middle school who has all their, all of their documentation, their credential, and they weren't, they're not being given building use status. They went to the superintendent, they went to the building administrator, they went back and forth, and somehow, because board members got involved and things like that, it ended up here. I don't think it should be here. I think we're over, you know, we're overstepping our bounds. I think that we're, you know, we're, we're going into a dangerous territory here, where we're going to start micromanaging organizations in, in our different, you know, in the schools, and I think that that could end up being a problem. So what I, what I'm going to ask today is for us to discuss it, and then I'm going to make a motion to grant Class 1 status, because I have no idea why, why we're even discussing this, and why this would come before us. I think that we have bylaws, those bylaws say certain things, they allow parent groups, and then we turn around and, for whatever reason, turn, turn, turn that down, and got involved to the point where it's, it's causing issues that shouldn't be caused. I think we need to put this to rest today, turn it over to the, the building administrator, and then never, you know, never deal with this again. If we have to change policy, then we can change policy, but today, I think we have to do with, what, you know, what our bylaws dictate. I don't know if anyone else wants to discuss that.
Are you making a motion? Because we'll have a discussion after there's a motion.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we grant Class 1 status to this PSA.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Okay, now we can open it for discussion. Mr. Ryback?
Okay. Ken, I can't agree with what you said, I said that during the BGNT meeting. First of all, the policy asks us to endorse, we're being asked to endorse this organization, and we have to look at, you know, what does that mean, if we're endorsing, what are the repercussions of that? How would it infect, impact the school, the parents, the teachers? This hasn't come up before, my guess is, because it never existed before. There's no school that has two equal parent groups, and it's not, and they don't have it, because I think it would lead to confusion, infighting, divisiveness among parents, and maybe even kids. When, when this first was coming about, all of us know this isn't, we're not hearing this for the first time, I called Mary Ann Friedman, who's our New Jersey School Board rep, because I wanted to know if, in fact, there were any other schools in Middlesex County that had two equal parent groups. And I'd like to read back what, and we had a discussion, but she also sent me an email. She said, "The colleagues who are available have not heard of any of their district schools having more than one parent group. There are the obvious conflicts that we have spoken about, fundraising from the same group of parents, staff, soliciting volunteers from the same group of parents, staff, scheduling issues for both organizations so that they do not conflict. This could be very divisive among parents and staff population. Personally, I don't see how this can work for the good of students, and that should be the main concern." In fact, it should be the main concern, and that's what we have to look at. If we're granting an endorsement to another group, how will that affect that school, how will it affect the relationships between parents? Right now, we know there's a lot of drama, divisiveness going on.
Well, yeah, and, and, and I agree with you. There's a lot of drama and divisiveness going on, and it's emanating from the board.
Well, I have, I, I don't think it's emanating from the board, and I think.
Well, I'm going to disagree, because I'm going to tell you why.
Well, let me just finish my thought.
Let, let Mr. Ryback finish his comment.
We all got a packet on Friday, I read all these letters, the letters were filled with all kinds of examples of harassment on Facebook and, and things like that, things that shouldn't be going on. That didn't emanate from the board, that started because of there, there were two groups really fighting with each other, and that's where it emanated from. We didn't start that, we didn't create a PSA, we didn't create a PTO. The PTO was created, was the parent group in that school, all the schools, and there was an election, the PTO won that election, the PSA came out of it after that election. It shouldn't be the case.
I'd like to say that there are, there are multiple parent groups, so, and I think we heard that at Buildings and Grounds, and Mr. Goodall even highlighted the multiple parent groups that were, that are even in this school, that we're in right now.
But it's different, it's different, because.
Why is it different? Because we like those parent groups?
No, no, let's not make it that way.
No, no, we're going to make it this way, because I'm going to explain this to you.
Well, let me finish, Ken.
Let's, let's do one at a time, let's.
Let me finish, let me finish.
You have to finish again.
You're saying, you're saying there's multiple parent groups. Well, sure, in the high school, there's multiple parent groups, there's groups that, baseball, and, and, and they, they fundraise for different things. When you have an elementary school, middle school can have different parent groups, but they have different functions. We have two groups here that are basically are doing the same type of thing. There should have been, I guess, a delineation between them, but it doesn't seem to be working, that's why I'm opposing the creation of this PSA. Now it's all yours.
Okay, so this is, this is the, the history, as I have learned it, is that this went to Dr. Kozak, who then kicked it over to the building administrator, who then made her own determination, that wasn't good enough for members of this board, who then asked Dr. Kozak to then go back and redo his decision, and fix it, that's what we were told, to fix it, whatever that means, fix it in their favor, I don't know what that means, but it's a concern, and I'm going to, you don't need to finish again, right, because now I'm going to, now I'm going to.
No, I know, I said it's all yours.
So I said, I don't even know the politics, I don't care. I'm, I'm basing my decision as the Chair of Buildings and Grounds and as a Board of Ed member on our bylaws, and our bylaws stipulate that if we have a bona fide group that has all of their credentials, that we approve them for Class 1 status, period. And the building administrator, if it has to go before the board, then it does. I don't remember ever, ever voting on any other parent group during my tenure here, but I'm going to tell you something. This packet disturbed me, because this is the Board of Ed getting involved in something that's petty and trivial, and getting involved in that fight on that level that we shouldn't be involved in. And here's the more. I'd like to know, I'd like to know this, who, who thought of it? Who put this packet together?
I have no idea who put that packet together.
You have no idea?
I have no idea who put that packet together.
And who asked our secretaries to put it together? Who authorized that?
Transparency.
I'll be transparent for you, if you would like, because I seem to be being blamed for things I did not do.
Well, I'm, I'm.
And I will tell you, I was in the board office the other day with Mr. Gorski, Mary Smith, Mr. Goodall, and Mary walked out for something, I think she was getting her lunch, and she walked in and she said, "Somebody left a packet of information for you," and...
Let her finish.
I'm trying to be respectful for you, I wish you would have the same respect for me, whether you like me or you don't. I did, I, I couldn't read those materials, because I did not have my glasses that day, and they will affirm that, and Mr. Goodall looked at them, and he said it has to do with the PTA PSA. So I took them home, and I read them, and I felt that it had to do, a lot of things that I get, I will have sent home with the board when appropriate, that this should have gone to, because some of them were written to the board members, and some of them were written to me, they all seemed to be attached, and I had them sent home with the board confidential, not with the agenda, with the confidential. The other thing I want to say is that I never got involved into, in the PTO issue, the PSA issue, because at the time, there was no PSA, until somebody requested to have a date changed for a dance, because their child was involved in another activity that night. They were denied that, and then Dr. Kozak approved that, that. What had happened after that, and I think there are people here that will, will testify to that, they're, they, the three other PTOs, the three elementary PTOs had been denied the same request, and they sent both Steve and I, and we have those emails, why were we denied and somebody else was not? So we gave those to Dr. Kozak, and we said he needed to look into it and somehow fix that problem, so that everybody is on the same page and, and afforded the same opportunity to do something. Why we don't have district functions on a half a day had to do with the, I believe, the custodian contract, where they don't work at night, they only work in the, if they have a, if we have a half a day, they work during the day, so they don't have to come in at night.
Well, my problem is with this, with this whole thing. This is a campaign against a member of the public, it's, it's a campaign against a PTA mom, number one. Number two, and I, I understand what you're saying, it's just miraculously appeared, there are.
I don't know who put them into the board office.
There are a bunch of police reports here, from everything, from snow removal filed by one member of, who this is all about, this whole packet's about one member of the public. All the police reports that she had filed, some maybe filed against her, some filed, most filed by her, and this is sent to us, right? This is sent to us. Now, we have 2,000 people sign a petition to move the trailers, that never makes its way to us.
Never saw it.
We have 800 people trying to save the superintendent, that never makes its way to us.
Yes, you did get a copy of that petition. I never got a copy of the 2,000 petition, the 2,000 for the trailers, I never got a copy of that.
Well, maybe somebody should have just miraculously dropped it off, and maybe that would have come to us.
Well, maybe they should have.
So my question is, I'd like an investigation as to why, number one, there are police reports here and how they were obtained. Number two, why we're expending board resources, Madam President, to compile this, to have our secretaries put this stuff together? They had to have put it together. Did they, did the person, person drop it off with individual envelopes for everybody or any label?
I, I got one packet, and my name wasn't on it, my name was on the list of.
And then it says here, from our secretary, that the enclosed letters were mailed to central office, with the exception of the last two, which were emailed to Kathy Kalaponovich. So you added to this packet?
Yes, I did.
And then you sent it out to us?
No, I did not add it, they added it, because it came to the board office.
They added your emails without you saying so? Without, you, you didn't approve of your emails being put in the packet, and they just did it?
I did, I did approve, it was the same subject, I said, add it on.
In a campaign against a member of the public. So if I have a problem with somebody who's running for the Board of Ed, are you going to do the same thing for me? Am I going to be able to send out a packet of information on those people and distribute that to the board? And then have our secretaries put it together, and have our delivery, have it delivered by board vehicle to our houses? This is disgusting. If you've overstepped.
I had nothing to do with it, except to send it home.
You have nothing, nothing to do with this?
I did, I did not write any letters, I did not solicit any letters.
Did any members of the administration have anything to do with this?
Not that I know of.
Madam, when, when, when mail is delivered to the board office, and it's addressed to the Board of Education, it is sent usually to every board member that week with, with the board packet or the weekly confidential. So these were addressed to the Board of Education, that's, and, and with your directive, they were sent to the board individually, because they were addressed to the board.
So these were individually created by somebody and, and dropped off like this? Or we had a secretary?
No, I got a, I got a packet of information, just the packet, it was an envelope, there was no, there was no, a title, there was not, no.
And in there were the anonymous letters, right, the anonymous emails? This, this one's anonymous, this one they, was separately.
I got, I got this, this is what Mary gave to me. Mary gave me this.
So Mary, Mary Smith, our attorney, you're talking about, she, she approved this?
She received it first?
No, she, I, she came in the room, somebody, she said, "This was left for me," that this packet of information was dropped off from me, for me.
For you.
For me.
Can I just say something? I think what we need is a written explanation of how this thing was put together and sent out, and how that decision was made. It all goes back to that document that I had been pushing.
I'm telling you.
Document of justification, but that's the problem, when we're told, if we put it in writing, Mary was involved, you're telling us a lot of people were involved, let's get it on paper, so we know who was involved. I agree.
Mary came into the board office, we were having a meeting to discuss the agenda.
I understand.
Right. So I don't, she doesn't know where they came from? She came in and said, "This, this was dropped off for me."
But people, when people have to write things down and put their name to it, they usually tell the truth. So let, let everybody document it.
And I, and I'm going to tell you something, because this really gets me aggravated, because when I talk to our attorney, she goes out of her way to tell me I'm wrong, and she's given me advice that has not been perfect, as we know, and I can prove that, if you want to call me on it, I'll prove it right now. But this is fine, to be disseminated and sent out, anonymous stuff and everything, this has validity, this, this is important. I made my case, and there's going to be a lot more to come, because this is awful, and so.
Mr. Braverman?
I'd like to say.
Use your mic, sir.
Based on your comments, Steve, his motion will eliminate the infighting, if there's infighting. I would also like to say, the policy on school usage was bastardized when you took the $300,000 from the town council. That should never have happened, but you, you pushed it through with Mr. Gorski, and only two people voted against it. It's still bastardized, and it shouldn't be further bastardized. I'd like to say this packet, when I saw it, it was obviously orchestrated, and I thought it was interesting that there were two police reports in it that had nothing to do with education, that I couldn't understand at all. So what I'd like to do is call his question, let's have a vote.
I'm ready. I, I don't know if anything needs to be said, I guess, once you call it, it has to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go to vote.
The question was, Mrs. Kalaponovich asked if this could be opened up to the public for discussion, such as we had with the trailer, but in order to do so, you would have to rescind the call of the question.
Well, I think, I think, I, I think Mrs. Kalaponovich's friends have already spoken in this packet with anonymous things and things like that, so I, I, I'm not going to rescind this, we're going to vote, and then they could.
Oh, no, I'm not asking you to rescind your vote, he's asking to rescind the call.
No.
They could, there's, there's a forum, or two more forums, and everybody can say their piece then. And again, this isn't about personalities, it's not about politics, for me, anyway, and it shouldn't be for this board, it should be about policy. We should be a policy body, just voting on policies, and just doing what's right for the kids, not playing politics, not being Miss Popular, not being a queen or a king, but just doing what's right for the kids. Let's get back to educating our kids, let's build schools, let's fix the nonsense, and stop it, and just stop the garbage.
Okay, we'll have a roll call.
All right. Motion on the floor, made by Mr. Chirrellis, seconded by Mrs. Arminio, is to grant Class One status to the middle school PSA.
Yes.
This has no, this has no consequence on the existing PTO, so just for full disclosure, that would still be in-
That's correct.
... recognition, so you would have two.
We're merely talking about the paperwork being in order, essentially.
Class One status for building use.
For paperwork being in order.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Ryback?
No.
Mrs. Kalaponovich?
I don't know.
We're going to wait for Mrs. Kalaponovich at the end of the vote, as is the case. We change the order on the roll call, as recommended at the last meeting, to make it random, and I beg your pardon, you were supposed to be last as court presser. Mrs. D'Amio?
No.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Chirrellis?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
I believe I have to recuse.
I believe you're correct, thank you. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mrs. Lang is absent. And Mrs. Kalaponovich? There are five yays, there are three nos, there's one recused, and one absent, motion passes.
We had, we had a person, a board member call the question, and when that happens, we have to go directly to the vote, you have the opportunity to speak under, because now in public forum, and it's brought up, we will let you speak under public forum.
Are we continuing with permitting?
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay, I would like to talk about the policy-
Mr. Chirrellis, I assume you're-
I'm sorry, Mr. Chirrellis. Can I, I'd like to say something, just to clarify something that you said, when it, we talked, when you talked about the referendum and the two questions, the public needs to know that each question will be a yes or no. So you can vote yes or no on the middle school, you can vote yes or no on the high school, and you can vote yes for both, and no for both.
No, number, question two is yes for high school and middle school together.
Right.
Question one is just for middle school, so they're either voting for, they're voting for one of those.
Each question is a yes or no question.
Yes.
So, the public can vote yes for both, or no for both, or yes for one, and no for the other. So it's a little confusing.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
So you could technically vote for the middle school twice.
But you're still right, right, you're not going to get two middle schools.
No, you're not going to get two middle schools.
Just one.
Yeah.
Regarding that packet that we all got, are we going to follow through? Because this is pretty serious stuff, are we going to follow through to see how this thing happened?
I would like to, I'm thinking about going to the prosecutor's office to have them check this out, because this is, to me, this is major, there are police reports in here, 10 police reports, all kinds of interesting things. I'd like to know how it was obtained, what happened, who did it, when they did it, why they did it, I'd love, I'd love to hear it, I'm not getting many answers.
Can we make a motion on that? Because I think that, I think it's important, because I would hate to see something like this happen again.
Exactly.
And it seems like, unless this can be done legally, to get these police reports-
Yeah, you can get the police report.
You can? Well, we, yeah, but we don't know who provided them.
Well, that's the difference, yeah. If it was appropriate for somebody on, in the district.
So I think we do need to follow up. We need to investigate this.
Okay.
We need to investigate.
Make a motion, I'll-
Okay, I'd like to motion that we look, we, I don't know, we'd have to get an independent, outside investigator, to find out how this packet was put together, and who made those decisions. And, and, yeah, who compiled the report?
I could, I'm telling you that I did it.
We don't need to spend money on a private investigator, he's telling you who put the-
No, I, I put the pa, I did not-
No, but we don't know who got the police reports.
I don't know who gave me this.
Right, we need to find out, that's what I'm saying.
Nobody gave me this, it was dropped off or sent to the board office with my name on it. I don't know where this came from, I could tell you what happened since I got it.
But that's, okay, so anything that's dropped off to the school board with everybody's name, you just disseminated?
We've done that many times, we've done that with anonymous letters.
Well, then I think that's a pretty flawed system.
Madam, if it's addressed to the board, it would go home, that's why these went home. Most of the content was addressed to the board.
Anonymous documents would be, would be sent to the board?
Anonymous letters have, yes, been sent home to the Board of Education.
I'll be sending a bunch of documents to you tonight, Mr. Kalaponovich, for dissemination to the entire board.
Okay, fine. You could send it yourself, you don't have to go through me.
I'm not okay with that. I think we should still get somebody to, to look into this.
I don't think we need to waste the money.
I would like to motion that we investigate who compiled the report.
What report?
Who delivered it to the school?
I have no idea.
Well, somebody knows who got the police reports, so whoever does the investigation can start there. They can go to the police department and see who pulled those reports. Right? That could be done.
And the good news is, we have cameras, we have surveillance, so we're pretty likely-
We can Oprah the Oprah.
It's important, because we can't have this type of thing happen again.
And we could look at when, the day it was delivered, and we could look at video, and we could see who was, who was-
Remember, anybody can become a victim of this.
So I second your motion.
Beg your pardon, what was the motion?
That we hire an outside investigator to look into who compiled this report, who got the police reports, and who dropped them off at the school. And then if we can get a written statement from whoever sent them out.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
He made a motion, it has to be either seconded or not.
It was seconded.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, so my question is-
Mr. Chirrellis.
This stuff, is this confidential?
No.
It's not.
Well, it was sent home with the confidential.
There was no confidentiality with this.
It was sent home with the Friday confidential.
The Friday confidential, I did not receive a confidentiality with this.
It was sent separately.
It was just sent.
It was just sent.
But my, my concern-
It was left on our doorstep.
Okay, let's talk one at a time.
My concern is if we research who sent this, it will prevent people in the future from contacting us, and expressing concern about other things. My thought is, this is confidential, we keep this, and it's not, I, that's what I assumed, it was confidential, and-
Under what, under what statute are you saying that it's confidential? Because we are ruled by the Open Public Records Act, and we are ruled by the common law right of access. So under what statute are you recommending that it's confidential?
Well, I thought it was part of our confidential board that we get every Friday.
It did not come that way, it did not say confidential on it, but my question is, there are only a few things under these statutes that are considered confidential.
Okay.
So we can't just decide, you see, this is what happens in municipalities and boards, they, we just decide arbitrarily or unilaterally that we want to keep a secret, and then we say it's confidential. You cannot just say it's confidential.
Okay, but, but if we, so, okay, it's not confidential, but if we go after the people that created this, this will intimidate other people from contacting us in the future.
That's a different argument. I totally accept your argument, however, do not use the wrong language, it's not confidential.
I agree with you, I don't think we should be going after members of the public to find out who did this. I think it came from the board, I think it came from the administration, I think it came from somebody here, sitting at this table right now. And I think that's what our investigation will find out. And when we find that out, it's going to be ugly, uglier than it already is. And here, for the camera, there's nothing on this that says confidential, because I could tell you, that's where they're going to go next, that I violated confidentiality by talking about this attack piece that was put together in our board office by our employees and delivered to us.
You could take me to the police office right now, I'll take a lie detector test, I had nothing to do with this.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, if you will, and I, is this a discussion, because I would like to say, while I agree with Mr. Chirrellis and Mr. Russo, I would like to make it a more sober discussion, I don't think that we should pay for, and I'm sorry, Mr. Russo, but I don't think we should pay for an investigation. I don't want to have a chilling effect on anybody. If we have an investigation internally, and say that if there's somebody in the district who pulled certain documents and put it together, that's fine, I do not believe, but I also don't want a chilling effect on anybody that puts anything together, that the board should be notified with. However, this is stuff we should not have gotten, to begin with. So in some ways, I'm conflicted, because we shouldn't, this is information, while we, while, I understand that we would get it because it came to the board, it is not something we should be involved in, we've gone down this very slippery slope, when you asked Mr., Dr. Kozak to fix it, because it was settled, then it wasn't settled, then it was resettled, and then it wasn't resettled. So this is where all the training that, and all the things that you guys have told me about micromanaging, went out the window, apparently, and we're stuck with this, this situation, so.
If you would like to make a motion to have an internal investig-
No, we have a motion on the table, no, I won't do that.
So can we even use, like, an organization like school boards, to advise the boards, what should be sent out in weekly confidences, or what information that's brought to their attention should be sent out to the board in a productive manner?
No, I think it's very, I think the statutes are very clear, Mr. Goodall, you have things that are of public domain, and again, we forget, all the money we asked all the public to spend, that, and then, and then we don't want them to know what's going on. The public domain says, these things are not confidential, I don't think-
Well, not enlabelling them confidential, but just information that the board should be privy to, as a board member, that comes to the attention of central office, board president, or the board entirely.
I think you can't keep anything.
That, that, some discussion, I'm sorry?
I don't think you can keep anything from the board as a whole, that has been my complaint.
So I think that that's the point that Mr. Gorsky made, that when it's addressed to the Board of Education, it's disseminated to the board.
Yes, but prudence, but prudence would say, the way it was disseminated, it was inappropriate, I think.
Yeah, but- Okay, so then maybe someone like the school boards can advise us on that, moving forward.
Well, I think, I think there's another factor here, you know, I've done investigations of this type before, this thing was sent out, it was time-sensitive. I didn't know we were voting on any of this tonight, and I don't think anyone that wasn't at the Buildings and Grounds meeting knew it, because that's probably when it was decided. So that narrows the number of people who knew about that vote, and had to get this document out before.
Do you know when I got this document? I got it on Thursday.
Madam?
That's what I'm saying, but it was-
Well, I got it on Thursday. So I don't know that people had, I had time to contact all these people, some of them I don't even who, have an idea who they, and asked them to write a letter and give it to me on Thursday?
Yeah, but-
You want to do an internal, make a, make an amendment to do an internal investigation, and we'll do that.
I don't want to disrespect Mr. Russo's resolution.
Madam, may I make a point of clarification? This was not sent home as part of the weekly confidential, this was delivered, like any parcel of mail, to the board, because the majority of the content was addressed to the Board of Education.
Okay.
Just like any parcel of mail that's delivered to the central office, or mailed and picked up by post office, if it's addressed to the Board of Education broadly like that, without a name of the board member, it's copied and given to every member, that's been the practice.
And is the practice also, then, that the, that the board president will add extra emails and extra content to it, to send home? So here's, here's some more. So here's something that bashes some member of the public, and here's a few more that I had, just in my mailbox.
Were they addressed to the Board of Education?
Well, let's go through them if you want, here, Board of Ed, Board of, you know, I don't, I didn't add anything, anything that came-
You just said, you added two emails, I have-
The emails that came to me.
I have a note, we all have a note, from the board secretary, saying that you added two emails to it.
Mr. Chirrellis, there was an email that came to you and I, that is added to this, because it all had the same content.
But what did it have to do with the, the police reports that had nothing to do with-
I have no idea. I didn't create this. I don't know what you want me to tell you.
No, but I'm saying, like, you thought it was prudent for us to have, right, but somebody having arguments about-
This packet came to me. In addition to this packet, there were two emails sent to me, that I included with this packet.
I'm afraid that we've opened ourselves up here to a major lawsuit. And I think this is not just the first time, because I think, Dr., you know, we're probably going to have a lawsuit based upon what happened earlier this year, and now we're going to have potentially another one. And I think we need to stop doing things that puts our taxpayers' money in jeopardy for personal animus, I mean, it's, it's just insane to me. I don't, I just don't understand it, I don't understand what's happening, where I am, I'm in the sorrow world.
Mr. Ryback?
I certainly want to just add a few thoughts, and open up, you know, to the other board members. I was just curious if, I don't think we necessarily have to go, Mr. Arminio, I'm sort of agreeing with you, I don't think we have to go outside and hire a special investigator. I don't know, Rob, I don't mean to be dumping on you, forgive me, but I think you might certainly be able to conduct somewhat of an investigation on, you know, from your office, and I thought your idea of working, of using New Jersey school boards just as a, as a source, you know, to get some information, I know they have a legal department, but, and we have our own attorney, but, you know, just as a source to get some information, and maybe we can work together to prevent some, this kind of discord.
Steve, I want to, I, I do respect you, but I'm going to tell you something. Every time members who disagree with the, the ruling counsel here, we, we end up having a lesson from school boards.
Right.
And, and we get told how we are supposed to do things, and meanwhile, we're all sitting here looking at each other like, wait, they do all this stuff, and why, why are we given the lesson? So we're going to have a lesson now to learn that this was okay to do? Is that what, is that the object of the lesson? Because I, I have an idea, let's have them come in and look at this stuff, and let them spend a couple hours with me. And I'll guarantee you, there will be other, different people in that lesson, not us.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with that. So there's a motion on the table, right?
Thank you.
Well, I'm real cool.
Are you still with, about getting a investigator to pay for an investigation?
Motion on the floor, made by Mr. Russo, seconded by Mr. Chirrellis, to hire a private investigator, who will investigate who compiled the report, correct me if I'm wrong, and, and then how was it distributed to the central office, and then, I think I answered how, why it was delivered to the board.
Who compiled it, which includes the collection of the police reports?
Yeah, I would be satisfied with just finding that out.
That must be the person who delivered the-
Me too, I would be satisfied with the police reports, that'll tell us a lot. But as long as we had a good, open, honest investigation, where the video was reviewed, not all of a sudden, hey, there's a really odd thing that happened, there was a power failure that just so happened to eclipse the cameras at the exact moment that this person dropped this off. And I know that was weird, madam, but that's exactly what hap, I don't want any of that, I want the truth, that's all, it'll be easy. We look at the cameras, we go, who is this? What is their, what is their license plate? Who is it? And if it turns out that there isn't a person there, then we look internally, and we get a report back.
We can look internally anyway, I would love to have an internal investigation, add that, make a motion, and make a, an addendum to his motion, we'll do an internal investigation.
I would, I would like to ask Mr. Russo, and he can certainly say no, if that we eliminate, I mean, again, because if members of, if people put their names on it, even anonymous, because you can even ask for records anonymously, I don't want to disrupt anybody in the public from speaking their mind, or making, whether it's slanderous, or inappropriate, or anything, I believe in free speech, even if I don't, even if I disagree with it. I'm wondering if, however, we can limit it to what we thought was the inappropriate part of the package, which was like the-
The internal part?
Police report, no, the police reports, which I felt were, I started reading everything, and I was trying to take everything with an open mind, and then I realized two things, one, it was really getting out of control, that it was not nice, and I don't like it from any side, and two, when people put that in, they lost me, because I thought that it was totally done on, to, you know, to, to, yeah, to disparage someone, and I'm not going to be a part of that. So I think that if, I don't know if you're willing to, if you're not, I respect and and accept your position. But that's the, that's the part that got me out of, out of kilter. Everybody else has a right to say what they want to say, right or wrong. I don't appreciate some of the language and, and what was said. I don't know if it's true, but again, to Mr. Chiarella's point, it is not our place. I don't think we need school boards to tell us that. It's not our place to do this. This should have been handled, the way it was handled originally with Dr. Kozak, when he said to the superintendent, to the, the building principal, and it should have been, what was happening, in, in my opinion, was that the decisions that the superintendent was making were not acceptable, and people, again, were unilaterally going in to change his mind and to have him fix things that they thought, and tweak things that shouldn't have been tweaked. So that's where I am at also, not just this package. It's the history prior to this package that is making me feel that we're doing something wrong by addressing it.
And just for a point of clarity, my suggestion of using school boards or another organization like school boards was not to chastise anyone or teach anyone a lesson. It actually, when it popped into my head, how can we make this better? That it, I know they're an organization that works with Board of Eds, and it was just simply even for my own learning curve, being new to the role, that I would have some questions and also get information. So I could serve the board better and to give advice about what should be sent home and what should not be sent home to board.
And I, and I agree with you, Mr. Goodall, and that was not aimed toward you at all.
No, I know that.
There has just been a prior history.
I just wanted to point a clarity.
Of us being pulled in to go through school boards' training every time they think, we need a lesson, you know, I need a lesson, on, on whatever. You know, or we need to tweak our social media policy, or we need to do something like that to control me or to control other board members, when really, I think, we need to control the people doing this stuff.
Since last September, we've had one school board training, which was our goal this year as a board goal, to have a school board training. And we've had one, and that was it this year. That was our goal.
I'm talking about history, but to have, I'd like to know if we're going to have future policy issues, like every policy, like the homework policy's coming up, will we have police reports going back to 2011, you know, from the people that put that policy together? Because I'd love to see that. Because that's what you did.
What, I did? I went and got the police reports?
I received it.
I gave them to you because they were given to the Board of Education.
Okay. We should get things that go to the Board of Education, certainly. But we, well, we have a resolution. Can you limit the number, Mr. Russo?
Would you be willing to re, rephrase your motion?
Do you want me to rephrase it to what?
Well, like as Mrs. Ms. Arminio said.
No, well, he, I, I said I would respect whatever he says. If you want to put a number value on it so we don't go haywire.
Madam, if, if it pleases the board that you could make this motion so that I am directed to solicit proposals for an investigation, and then you can ultimately approve the, the dollar amount first before you proceed. We could have that by the next meeting. I don't know how much this investigation's going to cost. I don't know if it's over the, the quote threshold, if it warrants an RFP. I, I don't know what's involved with this.
Okay, let me ask a question first to the board. Would it satisfy everybody to get a written document from Mary that she okayed to send this out? Because she, she must have reviewed it.
I believe she did.
A report on who, who, who was the one who obtained the, the reports from the police department?
I, that, yes.
Yes, and I'm, and I'm perfectly comfortable with having Mr. Goodall looking, look, look into this, but I would limit it to just Mr. Goodall. So, you know, not to bring any outside people in. And I don't want to put more work on you, but I, what I'm asking is just to look at the video, talk to the secretaries alone, and, and, and then come back to the board. I trust you. Come back to the board with your, with your, you know, with a report to us.
Madam, so procedurally, Mr. Russo, if you wanted to withdraw your motion.
Yes.
And then the board president can direct Mr. Goodall to conduct this internal investigation as was just stated.
No, just make a new resolution.
Make a new motion.
Yeah, we'll make.
You don't need a resolution for the, for the board president to ask for an investigation.
Well, I don't think anybody from the board should be involved in the investigation.
No, I don't think anybody in the board would be involved in the investigation.
What we want.
I would not be involved in the investigation.
Mr. Gorski just said he would be.
She would, she would direct, uh, she would direct Mr. Goodall to conduct an investigation.
I don't think it's, I don't.
I could do that right now, if that makes you all comfortable. I will ask Mr. Goodall if he will investigate, start an investigation on.
So what we want is a signed document from Mary that she reviewed and okayed the release of this information.
And?
Can, can you do that?
Right, we're not.
And, and for Mr. Goodall to.
I would have to, I would be asking the board attorney if I could get a signed copy from the board attorney.
No, I'm asking you.
What I do?
To do that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yes.
And we would like a report on who, who obtained the, the police reports.
Yeah, I would accept that.
That should be on record.
You're asking if any board employees obtained the police reports? Or who dropped off?
Well, we could Oprah the Oprah that pulled those police reports, so we could find out who it was. Now, again, if it was a member of the public, I don't, I, I don't necessarily need to know that.
Right.
But if it was a member, if it was an employee, or if it was a member of this board, a Board of Ed member, or a member of this administration, I'd like to know that.
But Ken, if it's, you know, we could be told it's a member of the public, and we don't know who it is, and maybe it wasn't.
That's a good point.
That's why it has to be in writing.
In writing is perfect.
Someone, someone will put their name to it. If it's a lie, it's a lie.
I think Mr. Goodall can handle that.
And I will, I'll look into it myself from the outside.
I hope he does, because I have another investigation I'm going to ask you to look up to do as well, when we get to it.
So, Mr. Russo, do you wish to withdraw your motion?
Uh, yes, and, um, everybody's breathing a little easier now. It seemed like some people were really worried about this. But I think it's better if we, if we can resolve the problem the right way. So do I have to make another motion, or do we?
No. I have an agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so what is the agreement?
I'm, I'm willing to accept that.
Okay, so what is it? No, I just want you to repeat it back, so we, so we know.
That you would like the superintendent of schools to investigate and look into circumstances surrounding a packet of information that was dropped off, it seems anonymously, to the Board of Education, and then was addressed to the Board of Ed, and then distributed to board members.
No, but there's two important points. Who collected, who, who obtained the police reports? That's what I want to know. We want to know who, who, yeah, that's the main one.
I don't know if I could ascertain who would.
Yes.
From the private, private citizens, uh.
From the police department. They should be able to, uh.
We could do an Oprah.
Yeah, and this would prove that either a board member did it, or an administrator did it, or a member of the public.
And if it wasn't Oprah, there has to be an audit trail. Because that's the way the government works. They don't just give you stuff out. And I'm going to tell you something. I, I Oprah'd stuff about a councilman, councilwoman, and about a candidate who was running for, for an office. And I was told by the police department that I couldn't get that information, because it was personal. Because it was about, it happened during a divorce where there was arrests that happened during a divorce proceeding. But, and because of that, they told me I couldn't get that. You couldn't get it from, about a private citizen. So when I saw this, I thought, oh, this is interesting, because we even have stuff back in two, to 2011 from this person calling because the snow wasn't, the snow on the street wasn't plowed. That's incredible to me. So I think that this had to have been Oprah'd. And if it wasn't Oprah'd, if there's no audit trail at all, then that tells me something totally different, and we have a bigger problem on our hands, and we're in a really dangerous situation. Because then there's some collusion here between somebody on this board, somebody in this, in, in this district, and the township.
All right, so I'm certainly open to using any means that I can to get all of the information, including the police reports. And if I could not legally get them, then I would come back and report that out.
Thank you, sir.
And, and that has to be done strictly by you, not with the assistance of anybody else in the school. Has to be done by you.
Okay.
So, for example, an email to the police department, which would be a nice thing, an email to the police department requesting who was the one who received that report, or who was the one who filed the Oprah.
That's allowed, by the way.
I will, I will do what I can as superintendent.
And that would be good.
Within law statute policy to obtain. And if I could not, then, or got, got a roadblock, I would report that out to the board, and additional steps could be taken.
Thank you, Mr. Goodall.
And then we have to, well, get into the consequences later, I guess, since there never seems to be any.
I think we're still on committee reports.
Mr. Chiarella, are you done?
I am done, thank you.
Go ahead.
I have curriculum.
Okay.
We, the curriculum committee reviewed seven curriculum documents. The first one was the grade four, grade five, and grade six language arts curriculum documents. They were revised this summer. Key updates to the documents include lessons and assessments that reflect the updated New Jersey student learning standards and the readers' and writers' workshop model. In addition, the utilization of Atlas. Atlas is our online curriculum tool to link websites, assessments, lessons, Google Drive, and other resources. Also, a comprehensive scope and sequence to not only address the standards, but also strengthen each student's individual reading and writing skills through exposure to and instruction in various genres of texts and types of writing. The sixth grade Spanish curriculum was also updated. It's a half a year course. Students take Spanish every other marking period. The goal of the revised curriculum is to meet the needs of sixth graders who now enter sixth grade with a stronger foundation in Spanish as a result of the Blended Learning Language Program in grades three through grade five. Students learn the reason for studying a second language and advantages of biliteracy, as well as culture and their homes. This class prepares them for future language studies. We had three new music curriculum documents. We had, we have, I'm sorry. Yeah. We have a new class, a Unified Elective. It's a music class. It's a general music class, and it's designed in partnership with the Special Education Department. This partners dynamic learners of all abilities, skills, to learn about general music in a collaborative learning environment. The latest addition to our Unified Elective Course Offering, in addition to the Family and Consumer Science Offerings and Fine Arts Offerings. There are six units that center, center on learning about music notation, concert etiquette, both as a performer and an audience member, music composition, and music appreciation. We now have a treble chorus, which was previously known as the Women's Chorus. It's an audition-based chorus. It has a strong emphasis on the development of repertoire performance and reading, composition, vocal production, and vocal technique. Performance assessments are conducted in eight to 12-member groups collaboratively and singularly. There are concert performances that are in three to six parts, and they progress in difficulty throughout the year. We also now have a, a Honors Concert Choir. This is an Honors Elite Choir. It's very rigorous, and students are held to very high expectations. There's a strong emphasis on music literacy and theory and high-level performance at various venues. It's a high-level repertoire, and it's selected annually. Tryouts are in June. Sections and ensemble sections are run by students. The unit also features conducting skills, score study, and college prep. The treble chorus and the pop a capella are awaiting a response from an all Eastern Conference application. Prior to this time, no Monroe Choir has ever been admitted before. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that they get admitted. Would be great for the Monroe Choir, Chorus community. There are numerous performances throughout the community. Ms. Ariel Klein, Director of Choir Activities, spent the summer in France touring with the University of Delaware as a lead soloist. And enrollment has increased annually in our choir program since Ms. Klein took over. So it's good to hear that the choir programs are growing in scope and depth. We also adopted a new social studies textbook. It's called The American Pageant, Kennedy, by Kennedy and Cohen. It will replace a hard, it's going to be a ebook. It is replacing a hard copy text used by students since 2005. Our current book is now outdated and provides no support or helpful suggestions to augment or modify instructions. The 220 ebooks to be purchased provides for continued number of needed to keep pace with increased school and department enrollment and growth. The purchase of this new ebook, digital only, provides ample instruction guidance and support for staff. The selected text also keeps the Honors U.S. History Program in line with the rigor of our AP program. In addition, we reviewed I Know It dot com. Last year, it was used by a few teachers as a free service. This year, a few teachers want to use it in their classroom. It provides math practice based on skill. It also provides data for the teacher regarding what skills need more work, so the teacher can see how the student is progressing and where they may, may need more help. It also allows teachers to set parameters to tailor the experience and make it more engaging. And the data has been useful for specialist teachers and principals in the RTI process. This is available for teachers. It's cost $150 per 30 licenses, which means two classrooms. So if teachers are interested, it, it's available for them. And that is it. Thank you. Mr. Ryback?
Just very briefly from personnel, um, I, we're looking for a teacher for, because of increased enrollment in special ed, we're looking for, let's call it, a preschool integrated teacher. That's a combination of regular ed and special ed. And it's a, it's a wonderful program, and it's a needed program. But it's due because of the increase in enrollment, and also what gets me, and I'm sure you'll all agree with me, it's an unfunded mandate. So this is money now that we, I believe we have, Mr. Gorski, but it's money that has to be spent on this program because the, the legislator deems that necessary, but they don't fund it. That's something to keep in the back of our minds when we talk about state aid as, as it goes on.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Finance?
Oh, Mr. Rotsky.
Finance. A few things from the finance meeting of last Wednesday. We had a guest join us, Mr. Ed O'Malley, who is the district insurance broker from Gallagher Benefit Services. He works very closely with Mr. Gorski on all of our insurance needs. We went over the District Employee Assistance Plan, which currently we have a contract with RWJ Barnabas One Source. What the EAP Employee Assistance Plan does is it provides 24/7 consulting services to staff for reasons of stress, family problems, depression, psychological problems, and more. And unfortunately, it doesn't get utilized nearly enough, and, and to the tune of about 1% to 2% of our staff utilizes this per year. So the proposal is to look at a new company called Carebridge, has sort of a larger scope of clients throughout the, the country. And they have a historically significantly higher usage ratio, in the range of more to 6% to 7%, which still doesn't seem like a heck of a lot to me, but it's progress. I think one of the things we discussed in the meeting is just being more active with announcing it, making it available, reminding people of it, that, you know, the staff and the, and the employees of the district, and making it as user-friendly as possible. So that's something we considered, and then actually, based on the price, we're currently paying almost $25,000 for Barnabas One, and the price for the new Carebridge would be $16,000, so roughly a savings of $8,000 to $9,000 a year. And the service it provides could only be better. So we did vote in favor of that. Excuse me. Actually, from the looks of these board meetings, maybe they can be made available to Board of Ed members as well as district employees. And then we'll definitely bring the percentage usage up. So, okay, aside from that, sorry, I.
Is that a dig?
It's, it's not a dig, it's a reality. But it's just something that just troubles me. Anyway, student accident policy was also something we discussed. The last couple of years, there's been three serious student injuries, unfortunately, and because of that, rates have been escalating. Each of the last two years, Mr. Gorski, Mr. O'Malley, actually, this year, were able to negotiate a 0% increase, which was a nice accomplishment and saved money from what was previously budgeted. That was great news. Again, Mr. O'Malley is the person who works very close with Mr. Gorski on all of the insurance, and when Mr. Russo was asked, does Mr. Gorski work alone? The answer is no, he works with Mr. O'Malley as the insurance broker. So it was nice to meet him and get, get some of that information. So it was nice to meet him and get some of that information. Last but not least, Falcon Care ECE Financial Report for the year ended June 30th. Combined, the programs had a profit of $483,000, which, a very good respectable year of profits for note respectfully. Last two years were $602,000 and $526,000, so this was a little lower. Looks like there's a demographic shift that took place, went up, came back down. We believe that it should head back in a positive direction this year or next year at the latest. In total, those last three years is $1.6 million, of which, as a reminder, we took $600,000 of that, and we, because it's retained earnings, we were able to shift it towards the cost of the trailers this year, which was nice to offset that expense and that much less we had to ask the taxpayers for. That concludes my finance report.
Anyone else? You have a report?
Just, no, not a report, but since he mentioned my name, yes, I did say Mr. Gorski works alone, because he does work alone. We're using a broker outside. That broker doesn't work for the school.
Not a broker.
Madam, point of correction. I've corrected Mr. Russo on this issue before, and with the utmost respect for a board member, sir, I do not work alone in the capacity of negotiating the health insurance rates, the property and casualty rates, student accident rates. The board retained the services of a broker. I work closely with the broker to set goals as far as what is feasible with the school district budget, so I wouldn't have to go back to the superintendent and say, "Sorry, sir, the recommendation from Horizon this year is a 13% increase, a $2.5 million increase in the appropriation line item. That's half the growth that the budget is able to grow in a year. You're going to have to cut programs and services universally in order to make that fit." I work closely with the broker. I make recommendations to go out and get competitive quotes. I make recommendations to the broker to, this year, we almost switched carriers by bringing it to the board and making a switch. I do not in any way determine these $20 million appropriation amounts by myself.
So who does?
I hope that's clear to everybody.
In everything you've always said, and even now, you answered my question. You are the one who negotiates the rates with the broker. You do. You bring them to the board, but you negotiate them. Nobody else here is involved in negotiating.
That's not true.
And nobody in the school is involved in negotiating. Only you.
Sir, that's incorrect. I do not negotiate the rates with Horizon. I don't speak to Horizon.
No, but with the broker you do.
The broker does.
Which I find even more troubling.
And the broker is trying to serve the board's best interests in getting the rates down as best as possible. I contribute what is, what is the history on the matter.
Well, that's what he's supposed to do.
And...
That's what a broker's supposed to do, but to have one person...
What's feasible with the budget.
I'm going to make a motion that... Read it now.
Madam, while Mr. Russo's contemplating a motion, I would like to remind the board and this community that the health insurance savings that are not only negotiated with the broker, with my participation, are presented at every finance committee meeting before the budget is voted on, at every administrative meeting, and at the board meeting at the tentative and final adoption of the budget. This is one of the areas that the county office has said is one of our fiscal best practices. I don't understand the problem with this.
Well...
And I don't mean to test you, but this is a fantastic accomplishment. I should be saying you're welcome, not defending the practice.
Pointing out it was nice to meet Mr. O'Malley. He works with Mr. Gorski on these health insurance issues and projects and contracts.
Let me just find, I have this off the air. An email. I pointed out to the board before that Gallagher Benefit Services has a very large book of business, including Philadelphia School District, so when they negotiate on our behalf, they get, they have clout. They have negotiating leverage. They bring all their clients together, and they get very competitive rates. Unlike the arrangement we had before, where you had several small school districts handled by one small brokerage firm, and it was subject to wild swings in rates. A member of the MTEA joined me, the insurance representative, and we presented it to the finance committee to make the change. It was done in an open, transparent, and collaborative way, and it serves the taxpayers and the employees of this district in a way that the county office states over and over is a fiscal best practice. County Business Administrator even asked me to write an article for Key Post Magazine on the successes we've had in controlling insurance rates. Is that funny, Mr. Russo?
I think it's ridiculous that one person works with a broker to negotiate $21 million contract per year. I do.
What about the superintendent? What about the finance committee? What about the board? All those people are involved in the process, sir.
Thirty-five years of working with, doing contracts and negotiating deals, and never, would they never let one person work alone. Never.
I don't know how many times I have to say it.
I know. Can we move on with the agenda while you're looking for your motion?
Okay, I have it here. So I would like to make a motion that we need to establish, well, I'm not going to say it's a policy, that any contract of $100,000 or more requires a committee be established with a minimum of three people who work in the district in different areas and do not report to each other to be involved in negotiations. One of the committee persons would be designated as the subject matter expert, one as a chair, and the other as a secretary, and we can discuss the workflow in detail.
Madam?
Why don't we just bring it back to policy? Bring it to policy and let the policy committee discuss it.
Madam, may I ask Mr. Russo if he looked at all at the procurement laws involved with this matter before creating such a motion? Do you understand what the procurement laws are on contracts?
I think it's in the best interest of the school district to have more people involved in negotiation.
Can we bring it to policy and discuss it there?
Why can't we vote on it?
There's large ramifications here that have to do with procurement laws.
Do the procurement laws have the information before they would vote on such a resolution?
Why don't we bring it back to finance?
I mean, to me, it violates every rule of common sense. You have one person, think about it, one person...
Oh, my gosh.
...involved with a $21 million per year contract.
Mr. Russo, I am one person. I am one being, but the finance committee is multiple beings, operating as a committee.
But they're not involved with negotiation. You are, only you are.
The Board of Education is a larger group subset that votes on this.
Who meets with the broker?
So you have ten members of the board who ultimately approve the insurance contract.
Who meets with the broker? Only you. Who talks to the broker? Only you. Who negotiates with the rates? Only you.
Administration's job is to manage the schools, sir, not the boards.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So we want to, we want to make it more robust. We want to make, enhance it, allow three people to be involved, so maybe we'll get better rates. We don't know.
And who are you suggesting do so and have that knowledge and background and theoretical experience, other than the business administrator? That would be like asking...
Would it be better if you worked with Laura?
You have, we all buy insurance.
That would be like asking, you know, the business administrator to weigh in on the curriculum design.
You're wrong. You're wrong. We all buy insurance. We're all familiar with insurance and rates. You're involved, you're one person, and there'll be two people working with you. In every large organization, that's the way it's done.
Frank, I just have to, if you don't, I have to just weigh in.
I second the motion.
Huh? I'd like to weigh in on something. You're saying he's wrong, but that's in your opinion. It's not a fact. It's just your opinion.
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying he's the only one negotiating the rates. It's not about a wrong. It's a fact.
He was just responding, and you said you're wrong, you're wrong. That's your opinion. It's not a fact. For years, even before I was a board member, Mr. Gorski gives his reports, saves us all kinds of money on insurance and on his budget.
That's his budget. You don't know if it's a fact. That's what he tells you.
We know what it starts out with. We know what they ask for.
Madam, I presented to the board, and I presented to the finance committee, a letter from Gallagher Benefit Services, the board's attain broker, that stated where Horizon's initial proposal came in, and where it was ultimately negotiated, saving the taxpayers, the employees of this district...
Why do you have such a problem with two other people being involved? Why do you have such a problem with that?
Mr. Braverman, would you like to weigh in on this?
Because it's a fiscal best practice that you're insulting and humiliating without an understanding of what you're speaking to.
I understand. I've been involved with negotiations for many years, and I know that the best practice is to have more than one person involved, especially, especially with such a large contract.
I didn't finish.
All right, Mr. Ryback, you go, and then Mr. Braverman.
How come he's first?
Because he was not finished, and I interrupted him.
It's interrupt, I think that we're trying, what we're doing here is impugning the reputation of a business administrator, who's done an outstanding job for us for many years on his budgets and in negotiations. In fact, it's the job of the business administrator to look into this, but he doesn't, to negotiate, but he doesn't really do it alone, because common sense, he reports to the finance committee, he reports to the board. He gives us facts, and he gives us his opinion. You don't have to agree with me. This is my opinion.
It's not agreement, Steve. You don't get it. He's not negotiating.
Oh, I get it.
He informs the board. We don't negotiate.
No, you don't negotiate.
No, we're not. That's not our job to negotiate.
Exactly. Who negotiates?
But that's his...
The business department negotiates.
The business administrator, it's his job. That's his job.
Part of his job description.
That's his job.
What I'm saying is there should be more people involved with such a large contract.
Mr. Braverman, can we hear from you?
Yeah, I appreciate what Mr. Russo is saying, but I think it should be handled in a policy. Just as an aside, I had a course once in business administration for schools, and the professor said, "If you really want to make hay with your board, what you ought to do is tell them, tell them that you saved a lot of money. First, put too much in the budget, and then tell them what the real figure is, and tell them you saved it." Now, I'm not saying that happens here, but it'll make Mr. Russo feel a lot better if we had at least a policy and go ahead with this, and you certainly don't have to pass the policy unless you're happy with it.
Yeah, I think that's, we bring it back to the policy committee and look at it that way.
There's a motion on the table.
Excuse me, Ms. Arminio?
I think there is a motion on the table.
Was it second?
Yes.
And not to be uncooperative, but you have to consider the limitations and the resources that we have here at Central Office. It may be different from any private organization in terms of negotiation. So, it sounds like the best practice is that the business administrator at Monroe Township negotiates with the broker.
It's a $21 million contract. It's once per year. I think it's worth putting more resources to look into that.
And with all due respect, I can understand if we were paying way more...
We don't know. We don't know.
The data in the report tells us that there is a significant savings to the Board of Education, and certainly, if our rates had increased to a point where we had to cut programs, and we had to cut staff, and so forth, that certainly, that practice may be looked at, but it sounds...
Not being involved in negotiations.
I think Mr. Russo is really right on track. I just don't think we should do it the way he's suggesting. But limited resources, that's ridiculous. I think, from what I understand, Mr. Rutske is a finance person. He's in security. We have a lot of, lot of people here. We've got people on staff that are also very experienced in different things. So, I just think it should be policy.
Do you want to continue with your motion, or you want to withdraw it and send it to policy?
Well, I would like to continue with this, because I think this one is very important.
All right, then, we'll have a roll call.
Madam, I'm going to ask the gentleman to repeat the motion.
Do you have it written down?
Yeah.
Then maybe we could just give it to Mr.?
Any contract of $100,000 or more requires a committee be established with a minimum of three people who will work in the district in different areas and do not report to each other. So that should be three people who don't report to each other, who work in different areas, because you can't have three people and two of them who work under Mr. Gorski. That would be like not having any security at all. One of the committee persons would be designated as a subject matter expert, one is a chair, and one is the, one other is a secretary.
So are you looking for like an athletic director to work with him, or a science curriculum person?
Look, you can find people from any department who are available. This is not hard stuff to learn, right? But they'll be involved in the process.
It's not hard stuff to learn, madam.
You have, you have one subject...
Madam, I have...
You have one subject matter expert? There he is.
I have a bachelor's degree in accounting. I'm a certified public accountant. I have a master's degree with distinction...
We're talking about negotiating health insurance. We're talking about health insurance. We're talking about negotiating health, don't make it more complicated than it is.
It took me my career to be able to be successful with this.
Listen, we've had people on procurement committees that bought very complicated systems, and they don't have to know how the system works.
How many resources do you think we have in the Central Office?
It doesn't have to be from the Central Office. It can be a vice principal. It can be an athletic coach, sure.
Athletic coach is going to negotiate health insurance rates.
Sure. You're the subject matter expert. You have two...
Those employees report to the superintendent.
Look, the key behind having the three people is for transparency.
I understand.
Having him there by himself, we don't know what's happening.
I can't believe what I'm hearing.
Does that happen in any other school district?
This happens nowhere in any industry.
Well, it does happen.
We have health insurance rates that average 6% over the last few years.
It's insulting to the people.
No private or public sector has that.
Don't diminish your colleagues, okay? It's not that complicated.
Mr. Russo, show me another industry where you're going to get 6% average health insurance increases over the last few years.
That's in your opinion.
Mr. Nostine once brought up the saying, "This is a solution looking for a problem."
What is your objective?
This is a fiscal best practice that you're looking to meddle with.
Why are you fighting having two other people involved in the process?
What is the finance committee? What is the board if not another party to this?
If you can't pick two people in a school who are not capable of working with you on a contract, then there's a...
But you're by, let me, that they can't report to anyone either. You're limiting the people who could participate in such a committee.
No, no, they can't report. They wouldn't be able to report to him. So...
I don't understand what the end game is with the committee, because you have people who are...
Transparency, okay? Transparency.
But he brings it to the finance committee. Last year, he...
That's not...
Last year, he had a zero...
But the finance committee is not negotiating the rates.
But when he has a zero increase in healthcare rates, I mean...
I don't know. I don't know.
Based on what?
What do you mean, based on what? Those are the numbers.
But how do you know they couldn't have been lower?
You mean that they would pay us to have healthcare instead of a zero increase rate? Is that what you're saying?
How do you know it wouldn't be lower?
Lower than a zero increase rate?
Zero increase means no increase, means you're paying the same amount.
We had a zero increase rate last year. Mr. Gorski negotiated...
Zero increase, right. Maybe there could have been a decrease in the rates.
First of all, your level of $100,000 is...
Why are you objecting? That's the case.
First of all, first of all...
It's one, okay.
You know, we're spending, we haven't even gotten through the agenda yet.
It's one contract, one CAF for $21 million. $21 million, you feel...
By putting a threshold of $100,000 would really delay, and we would not get a lot of things accomplished by going through such a committee.
Okay, well, let's start with just this one.
This one?
Just the health insurance.
This one?
So you're just picking out one specific, because based on, I'm thinking about what you're saying, at $100,000 level, like, that's almost every decision in the district, right?
Not really.
You want to redo the turf field, that's more than $100,000.
Not really.
You want to buy iPads, it's more than $100,000.
But Paul, you're in finance, and you think this is normal, to have one person negotiating every year $21 million?
When I deal with contracts over $20 million...
I've never seen any procurement done with $21 million.
I get your angle.
Madam, Mr. Russo's motion to have a committee look at every $100,000 contract, okay? Would gum up the procurement process so bad here that vendors wouldn't get paid, and instructional goods and services that we deliver to this district will seize up? Not to mention, you would be deluding this with people who have no knowledge...
Let's bring it to policy or finance and discuss it there.
I'm just curious. No, but he's putting up a lot of resistance, so what would be a good figure that wouldn't gum up?
Because he has an, Mr. Russo, with all due respect, he has an expertise in procurement with all of the companies and that he has been working with and negotiating with, with the broker.
So, there's your subject matter expert. What's wrong with having two more people involved?
Because they don't have the expertise in negotiating contracts for healthcare.
What happens if something happened to him?
Because it's in my job description, and it's not in anybody else's. That's the answer to the question. You have one business administrator and one superintendent.
And that's how, that's how public school districts operate.
Yeah, so, well, maybe it's time for them to change. I think it opens the door to potential corruption to have one person who's negotiating a $21 million contract.
I don't think there has been a, wait, I don't think there's been a problem with our audits or with anybody complaining that we-
Well, that's another thing. We had the same guy doing the audits for 30 years with one person.
And you know what? I don't think he wants to have his license taken away because he's doing-
Or didn't we motion to check, to change?
Yeah, we had a motion to change the auditor. Did that go out?
What?
The auditor. Did we go out for a-
I don't know.
Has that been advertised yet?
That's, we're on a different topic now.
Okay.
I asked, I asked Mrs. Arminio, you made the motion to switch orders. Do you recall when I presented to the board and the finance committee the size of the RFP document for food service management company? It is a very involved process. It is not something that hire another auditor. This is a lengthy process. There's a lot of law involved, and it's being performed.
Okay. It's being done. Okay. That's all. You want to call that?
Mr. Russo, with all due respect, you're a member of the Board of Education, and I respect you, and I respect the public who elected you. I don't think you have enough understanding of the process here of procurement in order to make a motion like this. I would invite you into the office to speak more with Mr. Godal and myself, or to investigate this further, perhaps speak with the broker, perhaps speak with the county business administrator, so that you could be better informed on what we're doing.
Better informed. From a practical point, do you think it makes any sense to have one person who has all the knowledge about negotiating for insurance policy for $21 million every year, every year?
I've expressed this as many ways as I can. There is not one person negotiating health insurance rates.
And this is going on in other-
It's you and the broker.
It is the standard practice for school districts to have their business-
Right, and there are other districts who have higher health-
Well, I think it's a very bad practice.
It's the broker, it's the business administrator, it's the finance committee, it's ultimately the board who's been approving it.
Look, you're throwing in all these names. The only one who negotiates is you.
That's false, sir, and I'm not going to argue with you anymore.
It's not false. How do we negotiate with anybody? You mentioned the board. How do we negotiate?
Yes, how do we?
You don't negotiate it. You approve it. The finance committee has provided the information, deliberates on it, and recommends it to the board. That's how it works.
So, you're saying Mr. Godal negotiates?
Well, you know what? Everybody kind of negotiates when you're talking about a budget process, about-
He negotiates with staff. Yes, he does negotiate. He negotiates with staff on salaries. He does negotiate.
Okay.
We are not. We are not negotiating.
Can we bring it back to policy, or, because we're wasting a lot of time when we haven't even gotten into page three of the agenda.
All right.
I'm certainly okay with looking at transparency, but if the standard practice for all New Jersey public school systems is to have designate Mr. Gorsky negotiate contracts, in this case, insurance contract, then I don't see the necessity for Monroe to be a standalone.
Well, we don't want to be the, what do you call it, the guinea pig for other districts.
The district that goes against best practice.
Yeah, it's not a best practice. That's the problem. It's not.
The county is considering this one of our best practices.
It's not. It's, well-
But that's what your opinion is. The county opinion is, we are.
Where is that?
Do you want, we'll get a letter from them.
You have something in writing?
If you want, we'll get something in writing if you want that.
We can get a letter from the county?
I don't see why we can't. We will get, yeah, we will.
But having one person negotiate?
We will get a count. We will get an opinion.
Okay. Well, I'll-
You know, there's a resolution that the board passes that gives me the authority to negotiate contracts. It's also in my job description, and it's inherent in my license as business administrator. That's my job.
See, my only fear about taking to policy is it goes to policy, it gets dragged out like every other thing we brought to policy, and nothing gets done. And then the public says-
Well, then, let's see, let's see what the county says about this, because they deal with every district and every school district in the county.
All right. I'm still going to push for more than one person, particularly for insurance, because it's too much of a contract for one person to be dealing with a broker by themselves without anybody else in the school district.
Are you keeping your motion on the table?
No, I'll pull it.
Okay.
Before, I'd just like to say that, as frustrating and upsetting or whatever this is, again, this is deliberation, folks, but also, it is, it is a good thing. Wait, Mr. Gorsky, please. I understand, and it is, I don't think it's just about you in particular, but my question is, sometimes people have to, and I don't know if he's in his comfort zone or not, but I mean, I'm a little uncomfortable. I'm out of my comfort zone a little bit, but I would like to thank board members who are willing to risk, you know-
Being laughed at?
Yeah, being laughed at, I guess, or whatever, to at least entertain different things. So, let's try, as frustrating as it is, and maybe difficult to hear, at least appreciate people who are trying to, in their own, you know, way, make things, you know, make things at least more transparent or better, or whatever it is. But I, you know, let's, we can move on since Mr. Russo pulled it.
I'll pull it. We'll take it to policy, but I'm not going to stop it. And particularly for insurance, and there may be other contracts as well.
Okay.
I think it's highly ridiculous to have one person dealing with a broker for a $21 million contract.
You said it.
Are we still on committee reports?
It's true.
Yes.
Are you up?
I just closed finance. It's up to Michelle.
I'm going to do, real quick. We have two policies that are for the second reading, the student suicide prevention, second and final reading, and the homework policy. I noticed a, we had a change on the actual policy for homework on number nine, where we said it would be at the discretion of the teacher during defined breaks. And then I noticed on the regulation, it says there's no expectation for work to be done during the break. We can vote on this tonight. I'm going to bring it back to the policy just for consistency. And I would also like the teachers to consider this policy, review it, and if they have any concerns, to bring it to, I guess, me, I'm the chair of the policy, through the president of the board, and then we'll talk about it. I want to make sure it works for them as well. The teachers should be in charge of that as much.
Just to address that, the teachers were involved in this completely. There was a huge committee that looked at this.
I know, but all the teachers can read it now. Once it's passed, because it wasn't passed before, all the teachers can read it. And if there are teachers, and I hope that if there are teachers who speak up, their voices are welcome. Okay? I will just say, please, there are several policies for the first reading. One, 550, is equal employment and discrimination practice. There's a student smoking policy. So, I would encourage all of the parents to take a look at these policies online. I'm not going to go through each one. And if there are any issues, please email us. Thank you.
I do want to talk to Mary. Okay. Can we move on now from committee reports?
I'm done.
Okay. Public forum. Anyone wanting to speak to the agenda? Come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Boy, for Tamarack Road. I'll give you the item numbers and the agenda that I'm referring to. That may make it a little bit easier. You have an item AJ through AM, well, it's items, AJ through AM, and there's even some subsequent items that are related to that that deal with these after-school extra help programs that operate at the high school. You're approving the teachers for those programs. I would encourage you to evaluate how well those programs are working. And comments that I've heard from students over the years, because I have tutored students as well as I have grandchildren in the system, they indicate that sometimes, particularly when they go to the CMAC after-school program, that there are 20, 25 students there and only one teacher. So, if they get five minutes with that teacher, you know, they're lucky. I've said, "Well, what about getting extra help after school from your own classroom teacher?" And they said, "Most of the times, the classroom teacher says, 'We'll go to one of the after-school labs to get the extra help.'" So, I would just say that I think it's great to offer these extra help sessions, but I think I would encourage that the administration evaluate those in terms of their effectiveness. Are they really serving the best interest of the students in terms of their getting extra help? You have item AZ, which is a personnel item, and I noticed that you're approving six math teachers to, well, six teachers to teach additional sections of math because of increased enrollments. You're also being asked to approve five business teachers to pick up additional sections of business because of increased enrollments, and four physics teachers to do the same kind of thing. It concerns me that this is the practice that is done, because I think it puts an extra load on those teachers that are already carrying the full load. I think it has a negative impact on that teacher's ability to prepare for the classes that they're supposed to teach. I think it has a negative impact on that teacher's stamina, the fact that they're simply, they're not getting any downtime or very little downtime. And in terms of your homework policy that you are doing your second reading on tonight, I think it has an impact on the implementation of that homework policy, because a teacher that's teaching more than the ordinary number of sections, if they're required to evaluate homework that's assigned, then they may reduce the amount of homework they're assigning, because they simply don't have the time to evaluate. So, I'm just concerned that you didn't hire another math teacher. You didn't hire another business teacher. You didn't hire another physics teacher or a part-time physics teacher by assigning these extra sections. And finally, the policy on student smoking. I read that carefully. As some of you know, I'm a former high school principal, and it does not instruct the principal or the principals designated on what to do with any substances that are found on students which are suspected to be something other than tobacco. Now, I realize that that may be specified in a separate policy dealing with drugs, but I know that sometimes, particularly if you have inexperienced administrators, they may simply go to the first policy that they find or regulation that they find. And this particular policy on student smoking does not tell them what they should do. And newspapers have reported, in fact, recently, that some administrators in New Jersey have found themselves faced with disciplinary action because they flushed the substances down the toilet.
Mr. Poy, your time is up.
I realize that. So, I simply say that in that policy, I think there should be a direction in terms of what the administrator should do if they suspect that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Rupa Segal, 12 Mitchell Drive. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the committee that reviewed the homework policy. I know it's been lots of months looking through surveys, teachers involved, a lot of people looking at the policy. It's very comprehensive and seems to cover a lot of the issues and concerns that parents have been discussing, and even some of the students. Going along the lines with the homework policy and looking at the whole child, have we ever had midterms in our school district at the high school level? I've recently been talking to some of the high school kids.
Going back probably 10 years ago.
Is this something that can be looked at, just looking at workload for the kids? I was recently talking to some high school students, and we were talking about what high school looked at like when I went to school. And we were talking to them about midterms, finals, just how our structure was.
So, when the high school made a move towards block scheduling as part of also the collective bargaining with the teachers' association, a decision was made to just do final exams with the option of a teacher if they wanted to put in a mid-year assessment as to not overburden and overtax kids for having to test on a year's worth of material. So, it's been a good practice at the high school, and that's where we stand right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Andy Polori, 16 St. James Street. Five-three. Five votes against three votes. That's what you have displayed for the last two hours. Not a single reference to the kids, not a single reference to the education. It's all about your internal politics and your bickering. You could not care less for kids or education. I request each and every board of education member to go back and look at and review the tape that you have displayed here today. It's a disgrace, and you should stop it. It's a personal attack to the president of the, I don't know whether she's right or wrong, whether she did whatever she did or not, but it's clearly attacking her and attacking him. You guys got to be bigger than that. Honestly, you have to be bigger than that. This is all being articulated by one or two people on the board, trying to get six people who can clap here and feel good about it because they reviewed on the television. You got to stop this nonsense. You got to work for the kids of this community. If you don't want to do that, get out of here. Somebody who can do this will come up here. And I tell you, you are taking no responsibility of what's going on. So, if I come over and I say I have a 501(c)(3), I got a bunch of parents behind me, you're going to approve me another parent organization for the middle school?
Yeah.
I did not ask you. I did not ask you. I'm asking Superintendent Godal. If I come back with a 501(c)(3) and say that I want to have a parent organization, I can have a parent organization, what kind of a message are we sending in this community? So, if you lose an election, I'm going to start another board of education if I lose my election on the side? Is that how we're going to do business in this township? It is disgusting, guys. Everybody who's watching this tape will see this and realize what you're putting up here is an articulated story of trying to unseat a couple of people. Please stop that. Please think about the kids. Please think about the schools here. If you can't do that, then please resign and get out. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lucy Trophy, 6 Annie Lane. First, I would like to say thank you to the board. I know this is a very difficult job to do. Second of all, I'm very happy that you're placing an investigation against that, the PTO and all these memos that you received, and now that you voted for the PCA. My second, my third motion, is that I have been in this town about 18 years. I moved from New York City to come here because I loved, it was a country atmosphere. It was a hometown, where people cared about our children. We're developing way too much. Now, you mentioned about the referendum. I've read about other towns where they have the builders contribute or help in these extensions where our taxes will be kept lower. I don't know where to go, but I definitely think it's something we need to look at. We continue to grow. We continue to build all these townhouses, and the taxpayers continue to pay. It really needs to be addressed. It really needs someone to do something about it.
We have looked at that, and building impact fees for schools are illegal in New Jersey. We cannot ask a builder to build a school or to help with the school.
So, then why do we continue to build if we don't have the room for these kids?
That is the township. That is not the board of education. The responsibility of the board of education is to educate any child coming into this district.
So, where do we go and try and stop this? I mean, this is very ridiculous.
Well, the building is the township, not the board of education. We don't have a say in none of the, it's a separate governmental issue and entity, really. They have to follow their own rules and regulations or whatever they need to do. I don't know. I'm not part of the township. Our job here is to educate children.
Exactly.
That's what we do.
Well, I thought you kind of had a word, and I just wanted to put that out there so that you could help. I'm sorry. I'm very nervous.
That's okay. That's okay.
But it really is a big concern of everyone, I think, that we really need to kind of look at all this and see, we got to stop. Somewhere, we got to say, "Hey, we don't have room, and we don't have the money," and the budget. But I am very glad of all you do, and I appreciate it, and let's look at other means.
Thank you.
Hi. Catherine Crowley, 56 Bruce Meadows Drive. I would like to ask that you also, when you're doing this investigation, should it come out that it is somebody who is currently put their name out to run for the board as the person who is causing all of this, that they should not be allowed to run? That that should be announced so that the public knows what kind of person we're voting for? So, that's one. Two, in question, in answer to what Mr. Plorio said, that meeting that the PTO had was not, did not have quorum. So, the meeting, the people who were voted in were not legally voted in. So, the fact that there was this whole big discussion about the PTO officers were voted in properly, they were not. So, I don't know if anyone is aware of that, but that is an issue. So, they are not sanctioned. They're not board certified. They're not anything. And I'm tired of people bashing the PSA as if we have done nothing. I have spent, I don't know, since my daughter has been in kindergarten, she is now a sophomore in college, I have been a PTA mom. I have been part of the membership. I have put out every single thing that I had. every single thing that I had for the good of all the kids in the schools. I have fed the teachers in high school, middle school, elementary school, even when I didn't have children there. I was there feeding the kids and Mrs. Alvic can attest to that. So to have people say that I, as part of the PSA, is not here for the good of the kids, you're wrong. I have been. Well, that's what you have, that's what you've been implying.
Could you please, excuse me, could you please address the Board of Education?
Okay, so the fact that you have now allowed the PSA into the schools, I would like to know whose decision it is to make that, which organization goes in? I mean, there are obviously two, so the building principal should have the right to vote on that or should have the voice. I mean, you have told us how, you know, they have, she has, she and her administration has come up with all these amazing policies about safety of the kids, we've entrusted the safety of the children to her and her kids. I think she should have the right to decide which group actually comes into her building to do what needs to be done. That decision should never be taken away from her ever again, like it just was earlier in the year. So the games that you guys play, I don't know what that's all about. I'm not usually about a drama person, but this is ridiculous.
Precip, 3 Dana Drive. Big picture, I request you all late in the night, so please go ahead with referendum, middle school, middle school plus high school, please vote for that. So go ahead so that next March we'll have, people will vote, two choices, yes or no, please do that because I'll not be here till 12 o'clock tonight. And Dr. Alvic, one question for you regarding the homework policy. Is special assignments, special projects, posters, you know, they have, where the students have to prepare, it's not homework, is a duration defined, minimum duration defined in the policy?
Do you mean for how long a student would have to do the project or are we talking about the homework breaks?
How much the teacher gives a time, okay? If the project.
No, that is not defined in the policy or the regulation, that would be up to the teachers.
That is the one I requested. Two things I requested. When the major assignments are given, you cannot tell the student on Friday and next Wednesday presented. And at the same time, biology teacher is giving assignment, you know, English teacher is giving assignment, multiple assignments are coming to the students at the same time. So that is what I spoke last year and you have not addressed that.
Not, we're not addressing it in the policy and regulation, but now the policy and regulation goes to the buildings and the buildings will work with their staff, with their teachers and their department chairs. The elementaries will work together to make sure that it's consistent across the elementary schools in order to update the student handbooks. That would be something that would go in the student handbook, not in a policy or regulation.
Okay, I would like to see that, wherever it is, that was my concern last year. Another one thing is, the AP teacher in biology gives assignment, the English teacher gives assignment, suddenly students end up with four big assignments and the students are confused. So my question is, students are here to learn, capture the knowledge, give them a time. Let it be, one teacher doesn't know who is giving what assignment. I had told last year there should be transparency across so that all the teachers know what assignments are given. That's one what I was looking for. Even I met you. So anyway, that is the, I want it very clear.
Again, that's not something that would be in the policy or the regulation, that would be something that would work at the school level.
Wherever it is at school level, like to see that, please.
It hasn't been completed because the policy hasn't been approved yet.
Okay, I'd like to see that when it is done. It's already more than a year now. The second thing is, PTA, PTO, whatever it is, parent teachers, I want the Parent Teachers Association where the teachers and parents are discussing also about education, homework, sports, arts, not only just raising money. I'm not aware of that, but that's the request. The parents, teachers, organizations means the parents and teachers are talking to each other every day, what the children are telling to the parent and parents, it's a cooperation between the parents, teachers and the students makes the school the best in ranking. So I want these associations, organizations to look into it, okay? That's my comment. Thank you very much.
Chrissy Skirby, 21 Preakness Drive. I have a question on the homework policy. I'm reading it and it, A, it talks about the definition of school breaks. School breaks are defined as Thanksgiving, winter and spring recess. Why isn't there any consideration into any holidays? We have a four-day weekend in, I think it's September this year, around a Jewish holiday. Why, why isn't that in that policy as well? That's a four-day, Thanksgiving is a four-day weekend, we have a large student population that we give off for these, for these four-day weekends around religious holidays. Why wouldn't the homework policy be for that, for that break as well?
Ms. Arminio.
Well, I, and I can be corrected, please feel free to. First of all, I don't believe we really give off for technically religious holidays for starters. I know that a lot of times the days fall, fall on those days.
Every year it coincides with that holiday.
Yes, okay. I think any of, any of those holidays that are considered religious might be national holidays and I think that there's, you know, those are the holidays like winter break and all that. The other thing is.
I'm just saying, I know, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm just saying, I know, I know the homework policy came about because a board member was upset that their child had to take a backpack on an airplane over Thanksgiving break. What I'm saying is somebody that celebrates this holiday should not be, are we saying that it doesn't matter if they have to do homework now over that break?
Look, personally, I'm not an educator and so I rely, again, on the recommendations of the educators, but, and I, you know, I've gotten both sides. I've gotten parents and children, believe it or not, who believe in homework. I don't, I don't think we should be that restrictive. I think we're, we're going too far. I mean, I was not, I was not pleased by this to begin with, but I went along because of consensus and, and recommendations from the professionals. That's why I asked that the teachers take a look at this and are happy with it. So to answer your question, I personally would not want to start taking every single four-day weekend and making it restrictive. I think it's, I think we shouldn't be restricting the teachers.
Well, I don't think we should be restrictive at all. My other question is on there, it has under elementary K through five, summative assessments cannot be given until the third day upon the return from break. However, in middle school and high school, it does not have that as a requirement. I'm just, I'm just.
Again, I will, I will have a discussion since, again, I was not invited or privy to the formulation of this policy. It started out in curriculum. We were handed the policy and asked to take a look at it. So I don't know the iterations that it went through. I can't answer the question. I would ask Dr. Alvic to have a meeting with me and go over it before the next meeting if she, if we have time. And, you know, but I, I don't think it's our place to answer those kind of questions. I would like to leave it to the.
Well, yeah, I mean, my concern is, you know.
I don't think it's a harmful policy, but I also think that if we tweak it.
Well, no, but if we're saying, we're saying that we, they can't take a test in elementary school after a break, but we can in high school and middle school, that doesn't make, it doesn't make sense to me. It should be across the board then. I mean, the policy.
I think, isn't it if the older the children get, look, we have to, we're trying to make global citizens here.
The older the children get, the harder the tests become. And if we're, if the policy is to give them a break over break, then why would we expect high schoolers and middle schoolers to take a summative assessment upon coming back from break? That's my problem with it.
It seems like a logical thing, but I remember in, I remember well not getting away with things in high school either, but definitely not in college when you're asked to, you know, do work even for important things. So I'll discuss that and we'll go. But I'll take, I take your point. Thank you.
Okay, and just one last question. That packet that you have, is that confidential information? Did we say that was confidential? Because I'd like to know if I can get a copy of that.
I don't know if you.
Madam, in my opinion, it is not confidential because it was a letter that was dropped off for distribution to the Board of Education. It was not part of the weekly confidential.
Okay, you have to open it.
It's, it's a, it's a public document.
Oh, I have to put an Oprah request in for that?
That's my opinion.
Okay.
Hey, Lou Masters, and I'm Michael Court. About the parent organization, originally the discussion started by saying it was going to be a blanket approval for all upcoming organizations, but then you specifically worded the motion to include only one additional parent organization. So what happens if another parent organization comes along? Is it a blanket approval or?
We would have to do the same thing, bring it to the board and get the approval.
And then, I guess on its merits.
Because depending on the wording in the policy, right now it says PTAs and PTOs, it does not say PSA.
So we'd have to change policy.
I know, Mrs. Arminio is gonna, we had, we had said we would, we, we look at that policy.
That's good. I would make it more, my suggestion, more general, because again, if somebody comes in and says PTR, you'll be changing the policy.
Actually, my position was originally that if, if a parent organization has the proper documentation, I don't, I didn't think we need, I think it was implied in the policy, so I guess we'll clean it up. But I think it was implied in the policy. If the proper documentation exists, then we'll go and move forward.
I see what you're saying. It's a little scary though about the tier one, so they would automatic, excuse me. I'm getting heckled from behind, it's childish, but it's hard to concentrate, I'm talking to you when they're talking to me. So yeah, it's just a slippery slope because now you're gonna have all kinds of, again, charitable organizations coming in and bumping or actually competing, right, at that tier one level. I mean, Mr. Bradman was exactly right, we had to go through hell when the township, they wanted to be tier one, right? They were, we bumped them to tier two and it was fights and stuff like that, so now you're gonna have.
I think we were, we meant a parent organization.
But it could be any parent organization, right? That's charitable. I'm just saying, we might want to actually tighten up those battles.
You got it.
The other thing, can I talk about anything on the agenda? It doesn't have to be up to this point, right?
Yes, anything on the agenda.
Okay. There is a note under Professional Appointments Number Four about Edwards Engineering Group paying them to look at the Schoolhouse Road property.
Yes.
Where, is that in here, the Schoolhouse Road property?
Madam?
Mr. Gorski.
As deliberated previously, there is a parcel of land by the firehouse on Schoolhouse and Buckaloo Avenue that's being considered as a donation from the township to the school. Building grounds transportation unanimously recommended to the board that Edwards Engineering engage in a two-tiered study for the development of that property into transportation lots to expand the fleet and bring back more in-house busing as opposed to contracted busing. And Edwards is going to do a two-tiered proposal, one for a smaller developed lot and one for a larger one. And this authorizes Edwards to do so.
And the 5400, that's for both tiers or just one of the tiers?
Both, it's the whole study.
Now, I know we've considered that, that land before, isn't that wetlands or something or swamp?
The Board of Education did not accept the parts that were wetland.
All right, all right, you did it. All right, thank you very much, that was it.
Anybody else wants to speak to the board? Okay, then we will close public forum. And before we go on to Mr. Goodall's report, would anybody like to make a motion for a five-minute recess?
I'll make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Hall of favor?
Aye.
Aye, raise your hands.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Five minutes. Time, the board will go back into public session and we will go to the superintendent's report with Mr. Goodall.
Good evening. As part of the superintendent's report, just to give you an overview of some of the things going on within our district, we are currently running our annual new teacher orientation for our new staff. The purpose of that is to acclimate, acclimate them to our district, give them strategies for a successful beginning as a staff member here in our district. I wanted to thank Dr. Alvic and our professional development staff, Mrs. Fatovic, Mrs. Goldberg and Mr. Tollboom for their stellar PD program. I had an opportunity to say hello to the new staff and new teachers, got a lot of meeting time with them as they came to central office through processing, through human resources. And the feedback always on our new teacher orientation is an incredible support for our teachers and staff who are gonna work in our district with the goal is to train, monitor and retain the best teachers that we have here. So thank you again to all of those who participated and continue to participate. I believe it ends tomorrow. Our administrative team participated in our annual summer administrative workshop last Friday, last Thursday and Friday. Again, thanks to Dr. Alvic for helping to put that agenda together. We received policy statute of regulation updates from Mr. David Nash, an attorney who works from Legal One, and he gave the workshop to the administrative team, was very informative. The team also continued to work within and learn about our whole child committee for this year. And we also developed amongst the team collaboratively, district, school and individual goals for each administrator. So the feedback from that workshop as well was that it was very informative and worthwhile to prepare for the school year. As the board approved me to be the liaison for the district to the Ed Services Commission, so I worked with Mr. Finkelstein to participate in an orientation where I toured some of the facilities on behalf of the district and discussed our relationship with the ESCNJ. Human Resources continues to work hard on staffing our district for the school opening, so we have some agenda items that need to be approved. Madam Board President, members of the Board of Education, it is recommended that personnel action items A through B, C, under the superintendent report, be approved by consent roll call.
Second. Mr. Chiarella, Ms. Arminio, comments or questions for Mr. Goodall? Mr. Rutske?
Comment is just so, under letter BB, the list of hundreds of substitute teachers, I just would respectfully like to take my daughter's name off the list. There must have been an oversight that she never took it off. She never removed herself from the district. She has a full-time job at North Brunswick, she will not be substitute teaching in Monroe. I don't want anybody to come back to me later because I voted on something with my daughter's name on it. So if we could just retract her name, I would be great.
That would be Jenna?
Jenna Rutske.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Arminio?
I'd just like to ask a question. I was reviewing all of, specifically AH and AJ. There are a lot of the same names on after-school activities and I know that it's on a rotating basis and two hours here and two hours, I'm just wondering, isn't that a nightmare to keep together like, and, and some teachers may be working all week anyway. It seems that a lot of the teachers will, or the employees, I should just say, because I think it's, it's not just teachers, are on all of the different after-school programs or extra programs and I would, I don't, how do you keep it out of the?
It's outside of their contractual time, so these positions are posted and then they're recommended to the board for approval and the teachers choose to apply for these positions. It is a bit of a balancing act for some of them because they offer their services to a number of different programs. There are times when some teachers will come to us and say it's a little too much, please remove me from the schedule. And it is a little bit of a balancing act, but with Mr. Colallo, the other administrators and the teachers themselves, sometimes they make up the schedule to cover classes based on subject expertise, for example, like in CMAC, we're gonna have an algebra day, we'll have a geometry day.
Well, my concern is, how do you keep it, like for salary purposes or, I know it's not their salary, but it's extra, it's extra. And what happens if there's overlap, if a teacher is scheduled for?
Well, they can't, what we would call double dip. So each teacher would be assigned to an assigned time per day. And if there was an overlap, we would find a replacement from the list for that teacher, for that particular program.
I know, but my concern again is for the student that you don't want to do that five minutes before a teacher is supposed to be attending something, right?
So a lot of planning goes into organizing teachers and sometimes we have a misstep and then we fix it.
So, okay, so you're saying that works? You've got it under control?
Somehow, although it looks overwhelming, it works and it's a credit to the teachers who organize that.
Okay. I mean, I'm happy if they can do the fill-in and all that stuff, but I take Mr. Poy's, also I take Mr. Poy's concern that, you know, teachers unfortunately have to take a lot of these extra things and do they have time to do their actual daily?
Are you talking about the 117 percenters?
Yeah.
I believe that's what Mr. Poy was talking about.
So we budget, and I appreciate Mr. Poy's comments, a lot, a lot of validity to them. But each year as we prepare our budget, especially at the high school, we try to budget to complete student schedules as best we can. At times to complete those schedules, we do have to offer additional sections, however, it doesn't equal the amount of hiring of. it doesn't equal the amount of hiring a full-time teacher. In this case this year, just glancing at this, there's a business teacher, there's a mathematics teacher, but I should say, there's a number of sections that would, really, you should hire a full-time teacher, that I'm sure will be in the high school budget for next year.
Okay.
The physics additional 17 percent had to do, we couldn't find a certificated teacher for that area, which is very difficult for some of the science and math certifications to find, so we covered that in-house, but in the spring, we will look for a physics teacher again.
I'm satisfied with that. AZ, there's a lot of pending, pending satisfactory completions of pre-employment, we have quite a few people on that, again, nothing specific about any individual person, but are we clear that before they get in front of students, they will all be completely satisfactory?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right.
Mr. Bradman?
On the substitute teachers, is there a reason why some of them are in capital letters?
I don't think there's any, I think it's just the data entry issue, I don't think there's anything significant about that.
Mr. Russo?
I had sent Mr. Goodall an email, he was supposed to get back to me about, there was one staff member that was, this goes back to May, I think, the board meeting, that was, was a part-time staff member with relatively, was relatively new, six months maybe experience in the school district, and was listed on this document, the agenda, as a transfer into a full-time job, and we know that that's not possible, we can't transfer staff members from part-time to full-time, so I had brought it up at that meeting, and it was going to be looked into, and I haven't gotten a response.
Well, in fairness, I did look into it, and I sent out a report to the Board of Ed, obviously not to your satisfaction. My research into the issues that you brought to me, and in speaking with the administrators and personnel who would bring something to an agenda, who would do the hiring, from my viewpoint and vantage point, it was done in proper fashion, and I know I've asked you to come and speak to me if you know anything else that maybe I don't see new to the role.
Is it, is that, is that a new procedure, that you can take somebody who's part-time and just make them full-time, because we should be told that, it shouldn't just be a transfer?
You know, I hate to criticize my predecessor's decision to recommend something to an agenda, and I know you spoke to him, and he gave you an answer, but at this point, I would hate to, and, and could not undo the decision that he made. I think we would expose the board to, at a minimum grievance, grievance or litigation.
Okay, but let's, let's, let's look at this.
So I can only look forward in our hiring practices to make sure that there's fairness and equity to all of our positions.
Well, obviously, you don't know the status of everybody here, right? You couldn't know it. You couldn't know it, there could be mistakes here.
The vast majority of these appointments come through the superintendent's office, and I go through a checklist based on the feedback, additional checklist that I got about some of the concerns that may be in our hiring practices, so I feel very confident in the agenda tonight that you're.
Feeling confident and knowing for certainty is, are two different things, right? So, I look at it a different way, we can, we can look at Mr. Kozak and say, you know, well, he made a mistake, or we could say, you know what, if you look at the situation he was in, where he was under pressure, and he was going to be leaving the school district, maybe the people who worked below him, those staff members, and now we have this, thank you, thank you for putting that on the agenda, the list of all the departments, because to hire somebody from, to give them a full-time job, the job has to be posted, it has to be a vacancy, and people have to apply for it, none of that happened here, and I see it was a paraprofessional job, you have 53 paraprofessionals here, you must have had around the same amount at that time, so let's say five or 10 might have been qualified, probably more qualified to apply for that job if it was posted, and it wasn't.
Going back to the issue in?
Going back then, yeah, so, so the question is, maybe Mr. Kozak didn't make a mistake, maybe those people who were involved in, for example, somebody puts his name, creates this list, somebody says it was a transfer, right? Somebody decides it's a transfer, you don't decide that.
Well, as superintendent, I make ultimately the recommendation to the board.
That's right, and it was the wrong one, and it was the wrong one, because it wasn't a transfer.
Not having been in the room when the discussion took place, I'm sure there was a search out for counsel on this, and it seemed, it seemed that an article within the collective bargaining agreement made that.
I don't see, I don't, I don't see.
The move satisfactory.
I copied that, that article back to you, and I don't see how it applies, but let's look at some of the other factors that are involved. You mentioned that that person has a relative in the school, they have a family member in the school. You mentioned it to me in the email.
Well, I, I gave the board my report, right?
Yeah. That person also works for a company outside, and that company has three people who work in the school who own the company. So you have, in special ed, you have a speech therapist, a physical therapist, and a behavioral therapist that own a company outside. Do you know how many people in the school district work for that company?
I do not.
Okay, this is a question I brought to Mary, and she didn't know either, and I thought that would be a big concern of hers, because that type of thing is ripe for conflict of interest, wouldn't you think so?
There's, there, anytime that employees work together, you know, essentially during the day, and if that, they have a company that has some association with the line of work that they do, there potentially could be, but.
Potentially, and we don't know how many, right? We don't know how many, but we do know that this woman, this part-time staff member that was pulled into a full-time job, works for that company. See where I'm going?
Right, but the principal or director of Personnel Services makes interviews, there's a, and.
Those people?
Makes a recommendation to the superintendent, then the superintendent.
The people who determine who gets hired are the people who own that company.
I'm not aware of any of the administrative team that owns a outside consulting company, if that's what we're talking about.
They own a company outside that provides similar services, same services.
The members of the current administrative team?
Yes. You have a speech therapist, physical therapist, behavioral.
But they're not, Mr. Russo, they're not administrators.
Well, I'm just saying, this is their title.
They fall under MTEA, EEA's umbrella.
Okay, but they have influence, as a matter of fact, the, you have a test that's required, a crisis training or restraint training test, that's created, administered, and scored by those people. So basically, they're the ones who administer the test, they're the ones that create the test, administer the test, and score the test, so they have a great amount of influence on who gets hired. They also determine who gets trained, and now you have training as a requirement.
Well, the training is put out to, my understanding, the training is put out to anyone who would be in contact with any student who has the need.
Well, they decide who gets trained, they have that ability to decide who gets trained and who doesn't. They do.
I, yeah, that, that would be an administrative decision?
Well, they, but they do.
Because that, then that is approved through frontline, and they put in for the workshop, so the administrators decide that.
They have, well, they can influence the administrators then, because they, they're the ones that decide. So you have, you don't find it troubling that somebody, that three people in one area, special ed, own a company outside, and you have no idea how many people in the school work for that company?
Mr. Russo, what would you like to happen here?
Okay, so I would like to make a motion, and now I will ask for the outside investigator, that we have an independent outside investigator investigate this school, this, this office, these people in that company, and the, and the relationship, and I'll tell you why. I did speak with Mary, and, so I figured, okay, let me call up school boards, and I spoke with the attorney there, and I mentioned to them that, just, and I didn't even go into the detail that I, that I mentioned to you, and what he said to me was, is, you have a big problem in the school, this is what he said, so everybody should listen to this, you have a big problem in the school because those three people in those positions can manipulate IEPs, now this is his words, to enrich their company. So I asked him, what should I do? He said, well, try to develop a policy, so at least you can find out first how many people work in that company, and then discuss it with the administration to see how we can fix this problem. Now, probably nothing would have happened, we were working on the policy, but then this one person I see gets, you know, sneaks through the, the hiring, and gets a full-time job, which I think is in violation of the procedures. So, I drafted up a policy, and I reached out to Mr. Kozak, Dr. Kozak, and he decided that we should call up Phil N. Castro from Strauss S. May, and we did, we had a couple of calls with him. So, the idea was that we wanted to have a document which would be required for staff members to disclose if they own a company outside, and they hire Board of Ed, district staff, or if they're district staff and they work for that company, or a company that, that provides similar services and stuff, I have.
A disclosure.
The document here, a disclosure document. So, he was worried that the, the document I created was a little too strict, I said, well, we can water it down, I wanted to fit it into his conflict of interest policy, to have it as part of the conflict of interest policy, this disclosure document, which had to be filled out. So, in a phone conversation, Phil said, he asked, so, do you have a problem in the And Dr. Kozak said, well, I have somebody who owns an income tax company, who solicits his business in the school, and I really wish I had this policy in place so I could have done something about that. I briefly mentioned the issue with, with the three people who work in special ed. So he continued to work on the policy. Then he wanted to align it with that online ethics thing that we have to fill out.
That's, the administrative team does.
Right. And then, so, and, and I still had my documents, so the last, last thing we did was, we took it to policy, and I don't know where, where Mary stood with this, she, she's trying, she's trying to block it.
Well, she's giving legal advice to the board that it potentially opened up the board for litigation, that it's not something that was collectively bargained with MTEA, and that there were perk laws involved, and again, I'm not an attorney, so I prefer for her to report out specifically what she's read, but during the meeting, she kind of laid it out, why she would be against something like that.
So you spoke to her about it?
No, I was there.
You weren't there with me.
No, not, after the, the second meeting.
Has a policy?
And I, I believe, members of the policy committee were there.
Okay, okay.
And in my, she also reported out that Mr. Castro, said that it was not a good idea, and we would be, again, a standalone.
Okay, so, that being said, and I, Mary was resisting from the beginning, and she didn't even want to discuss it, she was questioning me, questioning me as to where I'm getting my information from, and I can give the same kind of answer you gave to me about the person who has a relative in the school, that I've been here a long time as well, so I know these things that are going on. I find this to be very troubling. I think that that person that got the job, that needs to be investigated, and I think we need to investigate this company and what's going on in the school, and I think, Kathy, you're the board president, this is what should, we should be looking at, this is what we really should be focusing on, because this is going to give us a big problem.
So, are you making a motion? Did you make a motion?
Yes.
Would you like Mr. Goodall to look at it?
No, I think this, we, I think we have gone too far with this. The, the, I think, and I warned Mr. Kozak of the same, same thing, that if you let this thing continue, it's going to get too big. Nobody knows how many people work for this company, and there's, there are quite a few. They're using a lot of resources in the school, they're using up photocopies to create insurance forms, you know the deal with the IEP, and how the whole process works, and how you can benefit outside, and that's from, that's from the school board attorney, well, this is what school boards told me, this is what they said, you have a big problem, so it needs to be corrected, but I think it's grown to such a point where, I think it's, if we can't get that disclosure document, and we can't get them to, to, if we, if we can't implement that, then I think we need to investigate. So I would like to make a motion that we, that we look to hire an external investigator, someone outside the school system, independent, to look at this special ed, this area, and that, and the linkage between that company and the school. It's a problem, and we're going to have to deal with it. And I would think that every board member here should be concerned. It creates tremendous morale problem in the school, and everyone knows it, don't be fooled by it, everyone knows it, a lot of people are afraid to talk about it, everybody knows it. So it's going to come out.
Please don't.
Do you find that funny, Mr. Gorski?
Sounds like it is out.
No, I, I'm sorry, but you know, we, I just said to the board president, as chair of the meeting, we have a very lengthy agenda with some very material items that are.
This is very material.
It's a business meeting, I'm afraid that the public is, is waiting for the referendum decision and stuff.
Why can't you just let Mr. Goodall look at it?
I just gave you my motion.
What was the motion?
Is there a second to that?
If I, if I could just respond that, since I took over the role, I think I've been responsive to try to seek out more transparency, and recommend for more transparency, and I gave my report on the information that I had at hand, and tonight, I'm getting information that I would have liked to have heard when I asked for it, going back a few weeks, between an exchange between you and I, because perhaps I could have reported out on something different.
Okay, but Mary knows about this, why didn't she say something? Why isn't she trying to correct this problem? Why do I have to do this? See?
It's certainly something that the hiring practices here, I certainly could be a part of, and made corrections. I recently workshopped the administrative team on how we are to hire to its completion, post-interview and hire to its completion, and then I will make the recommendation. But this information that you're giving me about a conflict of interest, I, I did not know about till this moment.
Well, that's why I brought up this, this case about this one staff member.
Right, so.
And this seems to get, you know, just tossed aside, and I spoke to Mary about it too, and, I don't know, I, I didn't get a good response from her, I don't want to go into all the detail, but I, I get a, I get a sense.
From the information that I got, and I investigated, I thought thoroughly, there was no impropriety that I saw as part of our hiring process. The concern about what you brought to light tonight was not information provided to me, so.
But Mary knew.
Well, we can't speak for Mary, because Mary is not here right now.
Right, but you.
And in doing that, I did not, and in doing that, I did not want to revisit a decision from my predecessor, I thought that was unfair, and also on advice of counsel, that it may trigger either grievance or litigation against the board by doing that.
Well, I don't like.
And all I could do moving forward is to ensure that anyone who applies for a job at Monroe, whether in-house or outside, has fair and equal access and opportunity, and that we hire the best person.
Well, that person.
And I'll make that recommendation.
That person that got that job, didn't apply, didn't have to apply, works for that company.
And that particular case as explained to me was an emergent situation.
No, it's not true, it's not true, that's what I'm saying.
From the people involved, that's what has been explained to me. From the people involved, that's what has been explained to me retroactively.
So, I, I, I would like to keep that motion. I would like to.
I, I think we could do an internal.
Well, I would, I, I think this needs an external thing. This, this is, this is probably the most important thing that's happening in this school.
I just would, may I?
Sure.
If there is, I mean, one of the problems we have that no one really likes to talk about, if perceptions of impropriety or perceptions of conflict of interest. I mean, we are in a social and cultural situation now where people are coming forward, and I'm talking about in generalities. People are coming forward finally to say some things are going on that are not appropriate, just in general. So, I, I think that perceptions of impropriety or conflict should be investigated. I don't know if we should go into detail about specific things, but I understood Mr. Russo's concern, and I think there are a lot of things that, that may go on, again speculative, and that some people know go on, that we don't have full knowledge of, that we need to be concerned about. Conflicts of interest are, are serious in the culture of any organization, and I, I don't disagree that some things should be researched. And I do, and these things, you know, this, a lot of things have been talked about for a long period of time, and we don't want to bring this up, we don't want to talk about it, we don't want to address it, and then things can, can just become a culture that is, is not healthy.
So, any of the additional information that was discussed tonight, I have no way of validating that right now. I would have liked to have known that before, even as I wrote a report to the Board of Ed, when we others know information that could have been vital to my investigation.
I think our council. I think our council knew that.
Well.
Should have counseled you on that.
I think, I think you might be better off.
I can't validate any of it, but as, I tried to do a thorough and fair investigation, and there was information there that could have been shared with me, and it wasn't. So, here I am, sitting here in public, and I feel like I have a little egg on my face.
Mr. Ryback has a comment, because you, you, we keep hearing this, you know, we've been hearing this.
Well, I want to make my motion.
You made a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Ryback?
Thank you. I understand the points being brought up. I think the superintendent is perfectly capable of looking into things like this without all kinds of things going on. But, but I have to say, what I'm concerned about, down the road, I could see this interfering with people's lives and abilities to earn extra money. As a former teacher, I know how important it was for me to have extra jobs. Some people are able to run camps, and, and maybe they hire teachers. They have a right to do what they want after school. It's not infringing on, on their job, job performance or their jobs. I think that they have to have that right without us looking over their shoulders to, to see every little thing they're doing. If there's an impropriety, I think that the superintendent, it could be brought to the superintendent, and he could take that up appropriately. But I certainly wouldn't want to interfere with people's lives to, to earn extra jobs or to go into private businesses.
I, I agree with you, Steve, and I, I don't think that.
Mr. Russo, Jill, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, it's very hard to vote on a motion when you bring something to us that's vague, that we don't have any of the details, other than people have a company and they're using stuff in the school system, and I am very uncomfortable with the thought of hiring an outside company to investigate these people with that they may or may not be doing this. I mean, I, it's just your word.
Investigation's how you find out.
I know, but I don't, I will not agree to hire an outside company. That, that is.
Then vote no.
I think the job of the principal is to do the initial investigation.
Superintendent.
The superintendent, sorry, to do it, I mean.
Yeah, we've been down there. Actually, I, I think in this case, it might be better you're not involved, because if it's as serious as the school board's attorneys state it could be, it could involve insurance fraud and other things, and it's, it, I think, I think it's better to let someone externally do it and provide the report.
Mr. Chiarella, did you have your hand up?
Yes, no, I, I, I agree with Steve, that I think, I, I don't think we should impinge upon people's rights to do, have businesses after hours or on weekends and things like that. What I'd be concerned with is if those businesses are operating during our school hours when they should be working. So, we hire employees to do work here at, at the school, not to run businesses, not to use our equipment, not to use our email system and our phones and our copiers, and that, I think, needs to be investigated.
All right, yeah.
Can I throw my hand up, just, just a quick, I keep hearing this word investigator, and I, and I hear about going outside, and, and obviously that costs money. Not to throw responsibility at our Director of Security, but I'm pretty sure we have people that are retired detectives, that if we need something investigated, can't we keep that in-house somehow? I'm just curious. Like, that's what they did for a living. They were detectives.
I don't think that's the purview of our current security department.
Well, I mean, we're going outside the purview of a lot of things tonight. I'm just saying that sort of.
Yeah, but I don't think that's their, their position.
I get it.
But, okay, I got you.
I, I know, right, it's security, but I'm just saying.
So, would we rather someone go to the prosecutor and then we end up all over the front of the newspapers? Is that what we would rather?
If, if it's, the boards wish that I investigate matters within the district, I'm very comfortable doing that. On, on top of that, though, I would just ask board members in, in the future, if you have information that can contribute to my investigation, that you give it to me prior to I start the investigation. And that's all I'm asking, that in fairness to me, I, when I report out, I would like to have all of the information, so I could be confident in what I'm reporting out to the board. And I, I can't, after the fact, be given information that makes it look like, you know, I was negligible or didn't do my job. So, I'm just asking if you, whatever, in the year that I'm here, that if I'm given a task to look into something, I just get all the information up front.
Okay, there's a motion on the, on the floor in a second, so we'll have a roll call.
Madam, may I ask that Mr. Russo repeat the motion? I, I didn't get a clear motion.
That the board look to hire an investigator from outside, external, to investigate the relationship between
Be careful with that.
The company, I, I don't, I don't need to mention it in public, but there's a company that these three staff members work for and the relationship with the school.
The board look to hire an investigator to investigate the relationship between, I lost you when you went off.
I didn't want to give you the name of the company.
Between the company and the employees that work here.
The company and the employees who own it, and the employees who work for it, who also work in the district.
Can you specify the company?
No.
Uh, I, I can, I can send it to you, give it to you later.
Because, you know, it should be incorporated in the resolution, and this is so vague, I, I don't know how we can act upon that. Investigate who, what?
The, a company.
A company.
This, well, I'll send it to you. Do we need, do we need, are we violating any?
Yeah, it has to, if we're voting on that resolution, it has to be here.
How about conflict of interest in the school?
What?
Now, if you want us to investigate a company and employees, we need to know who they are in order to vote.
We can mention employees now?
No.
No. There's a confidentiality issue.
The company that has employees.
I just want to make sure.
No, it's.
What? Is there any restriction to say the, to give you the company's name?
Yeah, but we don't know.
Am I under any restriction to providing that name?
Why can't we just have Mr. Goodall look at this? He will know the company, he will know the employees, he could be able to do that.
Kathy, because for more than, almost a year, actually, it's been almost two and a half years, they've not gotten a good response, and it's been going on and growing, and I want it to stop.
A good response on to this?
Listen.
This issue?
Even this last person that got this position, I thought I would get a good response from Mr. Goodall, to be honest with you, that I would say, okay, that, that position is going to be advertised, we're going to do it the right way. But I didn't. I got the same story I got from Mary. It was a, it was a rush, it was urgent, and all this other stuff, and that's, none of that is true. So, I'm tired of it. You're taking, they took a person, gave them a full-time job, spending taxpayer money.
Don't you think the MTEA would have filed agreements if there was something done wrong and it had an effect on the rest of their employees?
Sometimes people are afraid to say things, okay? They're afraid to say it. You can't, you can't, you can't expect the victims of these things to come forward. You can't. People are afraid they're going to lose their jobs. And it's been going on for a long time, and I'm telling you, everybody in the school knows it. It's not a secret. It's what they're living with.
If you want a motion, we need to have the company so that.
Mr. Russo, in fairness, you brought up that for the past year or so, you've been asking for a response to this.
I've been asking.
And I was asked, as I transitioned into the position, yet I didn't have all of the information.
I had been providing some information and.
But the, the, it's absent of what you brought up tonight. About a conflict of interest, and it was more of a, related to the transferring and the posting issue, and so.
Well, connect the dots. This person works for that company. And suddenly gets a full-time job without going through the.
Going back and forth, it's, it's not productive. I needed that information, and I didn't have it, in fairness. So, I don't mind if it's the board's wish to relook at it with the information.
Because these people are lying to you, the ones who you're asking. Because Dr. Kozak did the same thing. He went to certain people and asked them information, he got the same answer.
I can't speak for, I can only speak for myself.
He got the same answer you got.
And.
They gave him the same answer they gave to you.
Okay. I, I, again, I would have preferred to have this information before, if the board.
Madam President, point of order. Is there a motion on the floor?
There is a motion on the floor.
Well, then let's go. Madam, there's not a motion that could be acted upon because.
There's a half a motion.
Okay, can I write it down and give it to you?
I need the name of a company.
No, because he has to read the motion.
All right.
Everybody needs to know that in order to vote. So, we either do it or we don't do it.
All right, what do you need in terms of the company? What do you need? The exact name?
What, what entity should I tell the investigator to investigate? I don't have a name.
Will I be subjected to any penalties if I give you the name?
I can't offer you legal advice.
Oh, you can't offer me legal advice, okay.
I'm not the board attorney.
And it's 11:30, and we have.
If we're not going to investigate it, then it will be investigated other, in other ways.
Withdraw the motion.
If, if the board wants me to relook at this.
So, if this is the kind of, see, we're not working together. If he's playing these kind of games, we're not working together.
I don't say it.
So, I withdraw the motion.
Mr. Russo?
I withdraw.
If the board, if the board would like me to relook into this, I will do so. I have some additional information. I'm sure it will take a few extra steps to find out some of the information that regards the name of the company, things like that, but I'm more than willing to do that if the board wishes me to do that.
I know, I know the board members are tired of hearing it. Kathy, I know the board members are tired of hearing it, but how can they honestly sit there and vote for things that they don't even know is on, on this document, whether it's true or not? And they're voting, and they don't care. You don't care.
Don't tell me what I care about, what I don't care about.
Well, you worry more about sending this document out than you do about.
You're giving us a very vague information about something.
We don't have the same, I have no information on what you're talking about, none. I don't have a, an employee, I don't have a, a history, I don't have the name of a company, I have nothing. How, how can I talk about that? So, we either give the name of a company or we move on.
Ask Mary. She knows the name of it.
Well, Mary's not here. I can't ask her. I'm sure that the first thing Mr. Goodall will do on Monday will be talking to Mary.
The motion has been withdrawn, point of order.
Okay, can we move on with the agenda?
Mr. Russo, has the motion been withdrawn?
It's withdrawn.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion to accept the board president, the, Mr. Goodall's report.
My personnel action items, A through B, C.
Did we have a, I believe we.
There was a second, yes.
All right. We'll have a roll call.
I do.
Okay.
This is Personnel Items A through B, C, under Superintendent's report. Motion moved by Ken Chiarella, seconded by Mrs. Arminio. Would you like me to take a roll call?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponow?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Uh, yes, excuse, yes on everything except on BB, starting with page seventeen thirty, of thirty-four, to, so, no on that, except for the volunteer coaches, starting on twenty-five of thirty-four to twenty-six of thirty-four. Yes on that. So, I'm voting BB no.
BB?
BB.
B, boy, neck, guy?
Boy, boy.
Boy, boy.
Seventeen, uh, page seventeen of thirty, of thirty-four is no, until, um, page twenty-five of thirty-four to twenty-six is yes for the volunteer coaches, which, by the way.
So, you're just voting yes on the volunteer coaches?
Correct.
Okay, she's just voting yes on volunteer coaches.
No on everything else.
Thank you. Mrs. Carino?
No on everything else in BB.
Yes on all except AD, Eunice Fonseca are requised, and AX, Nancy Dempsey are requised.
Thank you. Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMeo?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Abstain. So noted.
So noted. Mr. Braverman? He's left. Mr. Braverman?
He left.
I didn't see that.
Madam Board President, motion passed.
Okay, thank you.
Word Action Items.
Yep.
Madam Board President and members of, oh, I'm sorry. Just out to the school community, members of the Board of Education, I wanted to congratulate Michael Collins, who's been a longtime teacher in the district. He will be serving as the acting vice principal at the high school. So, now the high school administrative team is fully staffed. Mr. Collins, good luck. Thank you.
Congratulations on your position.
It is, it is a lot quieter down there, Mr. Collins, I can assure you.
Okay.
Madam Board President and members of the Board of Ed, it is recommended that the Board Action Items A through L be approved by consent roll call.
Who, who was the first? Mr. Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback?
I have A through L.
I have A through G.
Was there a, I think there was an addition. I have A through L.
I don't know.
A through L.
You have A through L?
I have A through L.
They have L.
So, we'll go for A through L.
Yeah.
I have A through L.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we got an updated one late this afternoon.
I'm sorry about that, it was.
That's okay.
Is there a motion?
Yeah. Um, Mr. Chiarella, Mr. Ryback, I believe?
Yes.
Comments or questions?
Uh, just one on G, that the.
G or J?
The Science Club?
No, so, recommend the board approve the agreement between Professional Crisis Management Association.
F?
It's G.
It's G.
It's G.
It's G on the new one, right, twenty-seven? Okay. Is that the one that Mr. Rutske was talking about?
No, it runs along with the restrained training policy.
Okay, never mind.
And that's the fee for the training.
Thank you.
And then we turn K.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Then we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Russo?
Recused. Or abstained.
Was that a recuse or an abstain?
Abstained.
So noted, as in abstention. Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mrs. Uh, Mrs. DeMeo?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Rutske?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Koloponow?
Yes.
Word Action Items A through L has passed.
Okay, we will go to the Business Administrator's report, Mr. Dorsky. Oh, you're, I am assuming your report is concluded?
That is my, my report is concluded.
Okay. Mr. Dorsky.
Madam Board President, members of the Board of Education, members of the public, I would like to point out that within my report, we have some very material items that are being voted on. Professional Appointment Number Four, under the Business Administrator's report, is, again, Edwards Engineering, and that's to develop the lot on Schoolhouse in Buckaloo, Jason to the Firehouse, for future development of a bus depot. The, the study was approved unanimously by Building Grounds Transportation, and will provide the Board of Education information on, on how to proceed with that project. Also, under my report, Item L is a very material resolution for a special election. And there was some commentary on this before, but this question for the referendum will have two parts. And there was some commentary on this before, but this question for the referendum will have two parts. First will be vote for a middle school referendum, the construction of a middle school on land to be donated by the township. You could vote yes or no on that. The second question will be the middle school with a high school addition component. The cost for those projects are, if the referendum is held March of 2019, the middle school option is seventy-five million, six hundred eighty-seven thousand. The middle school and high school addition is a hundred and forty-six million, one hundred and seventeen thousand. These figures are subject to change, once we get the bond referendum question established, but that gives you a good understanding of, of what it is for. And Item M authorizes the utilization of professionals, most importantly, for the development of educational specifications, which design the school facility for the purpose that it's being intended for. Um, I would like to also report that the Board directed me individually to come up with a business plan for Falcon Care Program and Before and After School Care Program, which I did so, and I took to the Finance Committee. And I'm very proud to report, as Mr. Rutzke indicated in the Finance Agenda, that in the first three years of operations, Falcon Care and ECE combined have earned over one point six million dollars of profit, which is at the Board's discretion on, on what to do, and it's unlimited. So, I would like to give kudos to Sharon Jensen, the Program Director, Dr. Alvik, who worked extensively with Ms. Jensen in the development of the curriculum, uh, for a program that has been extremely successful in its first three years. Madam Board President and members of the Monrotownship Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through O be approved by consent roll call. Mr. Ryback?
Mr. Ryback, Mr. Mr. DeMeo? Comments or questions?
Can I say something?
Yes, Mr. DeMeo.
Um, I just thought it was very nice of Mr. John Brown to make a donation to the school district of an Alpha mat board and storage shelf valued at seventeen fifty, that was very generous. And the donation of the Mill Lake School PTO, who donated ten thousand dollars to Mill Lake Woodland, wait, who donated ten thousand dollars?
By Mill Lake.
By the Mill Lake Woodland PTO for the purpose of advancing STEM activities at Mill Lake School. It's very generous, too. So, I'd like to thank the individual, Mr. Brown, and the Mill Lake School PTO for their generous donations.
Anyone else? Comment, question? Mr. Medio?
Mr. Gorski, could, I'm sorry, could you point out to me where the SREC trade, what number, what, uh, number or, is that on this?
Indeed.
K, letter K.
Letter-
Looking for K.
Top of page thirty.
Okay. All right. My only question on that was, um, there seemed to be, first of all, I didn't see this as a contract. I know you said after this is, after this is approved, there is a contract, but the contract isn't, isn't attached. Is it in the Board Doc, sir?
There is, there is not a contract in the Board Doc, there's a proposal. Uh, we've, we've engaged in this same entity now for year after year after year since Oaktree School started.
Right, got it.
And this is a brokerage service that allows the district to sell energy credits on an exchange.
Yeah, no, I read the whole twenty-eight pages, believe it or not. My only thought was, there, there's three charges to us. We get, um, a- I wrote it down to be quick.
May I, may I make it easy with explanation?
One second, I have it. We have, uh, the, the charges to, um, we get a fee for easy REC fees, easy rec fees, that's a percentage-based management fee, and then plus a percentage-based transfer fee. And then there's an SREC trade, uh, they said trade reserves the right to change, to charge separate per rec a minimum service fee of up to two fifty, two dollars and fifty cents. So, just, can you just explain the last one? That's the one I didn't understand so much.
Yes, uh, the, the substance of this is that as a brokerage commission for selling our energy credits, uh, the company gets about five percent of the sale.
Even after the other fees that they charge, the manage-
It's about, it's about five percent of the sale. And, um, they, they, um, they maximize our revenue in a competitive environment with, uh, that bidding process for the Shreks. It was a lot more money in the past when there's federal subsidies involved. Now, it's dwindled down to where the district receives about twenty-five thousand dollars a year from the sale of these solar renewable energy credits.
'Cause, 'cause I know that, well, there's different ways to do it, so I, I guess I'll talk to you afterwards, but I just thought that they're, they're probably, I'd like to see how much they actually make from the, even though we make twenty-five thousand, I, maybe I can ask to come in and talk to you and see how much they make.
Sure, they get about five percent of the sale.
So, uh, total, including all those things?
Yeah.
So, twenty-five, twenty-five, so five percent of twenty-five thousand, you're saying?
Approximately five percent, yep. That's correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call.
May I have to abstain on that? Yeah, yeah. For the middle school, so you're okay to go on?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Rutzke?
Oh, I go first. So, I'm yes to everything, but I abstain from letter O, where I, yeah.
So noted. Mrs. Carino?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMeo?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
And Mrs. Koloponov?
Yes.
Madam Board President, some very material motions in my report have passed, along with the consent report.
That's great.
That concludes Business Administrator's Report.
Okay, is there any other business from any member of the Board of Education?
We're just, I'm sorry?
Any other business from any member of the Board of Education?
Um, I, I just have a question, I believe Mr. Um, Gorski answered it already. So, we're in the process of the request for a proposal for the auditor? That's in the process?
He, he, yeah, he said, "We're in the process of doing that."
Of, of doing specs, or is it?
Um, as I stated earlier, the request for a proposal document, um, one which I illustrated very recently with the Food Service Management Company, is a very lengthy document. It's designed to comply with procurement laws, and also to encourage a fair and open competitive market for, um, services in this case. And an RFP, unlike a bid, allows the Board of Education discretion of considering not only quantitative considerations, but also qualitative. When it comes to accounting services and legal services and architectural services, uh, there, there is an interest of the Board and the taxpayer to get a quality service and the performance of such. You don't just have to go with the lowest bidder because it's not a commodity. Uh, it is a very voluminous document, it's being put together, it involves legal as well, and it will be presented, uh, at the next Finance Committee meeting.
Okay.
That's my goal.
And I have one more question. When are we going to have, um, an advertisement for a superintendent? Do you, do you have plans to, or do we have to keep putting a resolution forward to advertise for a superintendent of schools? 'Cause I think that we need, uh, you know, not, nothing to do with Mr. Goodall, um, but as he, as he says, he's, you know, he's in the process of, of learning this stuff, um, and he, you know, I'm not gonna comment otherwise, but, um, if we need, we should, we're gonna have a resolution for the referendum, I think we should also be concerned about getting a superintendent in the school district. So, are we waiting for you, Madam President, to put that forward, or should we be coming to the Board every month, asking for a resolution?
Well, I think what I had said at the last Board meeting, that it was a good idea to take a little break and have Mr. Goodall do what he needed to do, um, get involved in, in the dealings of the, um, the district. I don't wanna start a search and have to start it again with a new Board in January, so I was looking to, to just work on the, on the stuff that we're doing right now, and doing search starting in the spring. One of the, not in the spring, but in January, February, one of the biggest considerations was that at this time of year, superintendents are already in place for September, and you're getting like the leftover superintendents, and the best time of year to do a, a, um, according to school boards and others, is in the spring, when superintendents are looking for a position.
It, it's, you, you seem to have suggested, though, that you're waiting and hopeful for a turnover on the Board.
Could be a turnover either way, it could be no turnover, so it doesn't-
I, I, I would think that it's, it's an important issue that we may be able to find somebody, um, you know, there are a lot of people who, we, we may not, we have Mr. Goodall for a year, and he also may be a candidate. But if we, we can have a superintendent, to your point, we could look for a superintendent that doesn't have to give notice until June thirtieth of twenty nineteen, based on Mr. Goodall's contract. So, I, so your point or your argument about not going out now, I mean, if there's a superintendent who is active in a school system, they still may be interested in coming to Monroe, and they wouldn't have to give notice until June or, or if they have to give notice in January of twenty nineteen. So, I think because we have a lot of upheaval, and we have a lot of things going on, I think it would be prudent of us to, uh, start on that process right away, so, um, maybe I'll, and I wasn't prepared to, but because I, I'm not sure, I think we have even enough time for Jan, for June thirtieth, um, I'll make a resolution to advertise for a superintendent.
Make a motion?
I'll make a, I'm sorry, make a motion to advertise for a superintendent.
Or to start the superintendent process, 'cause there's a lot that you would do before you would advertise.
Well, let's start it, yep.
Second. Oh, I can't.
No.
No.
Start the superintendent process, correct?
Well, nobody's seconded.
Was there a second?
Second.
Mr. Russo? Comments or questions?
My only concern there, certainly I realize we have to do a search for a new superintendent, my concern is, along the lines of what you were saying, is who's out there now? You said that they might be willing to, uh, apply and then come in next year. I don't think anybody would, but, you know what? The word gets out. If somebody comes in here and does an interview, the district's gonna find out about it. And I, I think in, in reality, I mean, that's what happens. And we, I mean, if, if Mr. Goodall would be, uh, applying for superintendent in another district, boy, we'd find out about it. And other districts, that's just the way it is. And I think that that would, that alone would prevent people from, uh, applying. And I think we will take the short end of the stick if we did this now. I think we're better off waiting for January, a few months, I understand. Look, the Board can go either way. That, that's not my concern. My concern is, you know, who are we gonna get? What kind of leader are we gonna get? And, and we're better off, smarter, I think, to wait for January or so than do it now and let the cat out of the bag.
Well, also, school boards in their workshop has a, a lot of superintendent, um, connections for those who are looking for superintendents, um, and they do a, a workshop to how to, how to do a superintendent's search.
Well, we've all been there, so there's a motion on the table.
Not all of us have been there, I don't think. So, all right, we, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Ryback?
No.
Mrs. DeMeo?
No.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Carino?
Recused.
Mr. Rutzke?
I prefer to wait, no.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Arminio?
Yes.
And Mrs. Koloponov?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. I'm done.
Any other Board business? Then we'll go to public forum, anyone wishing to come to the microphone? Please state your name and address for the record. And we will adhere to our four-minute time limit.
Doug Poeh, Fort Tamarack Road. I know that you have settled the contract with the Teachers Association, and since it is the taxpayers of Monroe who provide the bulk of the, uh, taxes that support the school system, uh, I would request that, uh, at our next Board meeting, you share with the public, uh, the results of that contract in terms of, uh, things such as salary, uh, such as any major benefits, uh, that were changes in, uh, in that. Uh, I simply think that it, the public has a right to know, since, since we are essentially paying the bill. So, please give that some consideration.
Actually, Mr. Poeh, I carried that information around with me for a while, and nobody ever asked, and we got involved in other things. I don't have it tonight.
That's, that's okay, I didn't, I, you know, like, that's the reason I'm asking for next month.
Okay.
Also, I, I've reviewed, uh, all the various minutes and videos of the Board meetings, uh, over the last several months, and there was a meeting, uh, in which the contracts for the assistant superintendent, as well as the business administrator, were not approved. And, uh, I was just wondering, what is the status of that? And, and before you answer that question, let me say the following, that, uh, I, I think when you don't approve a contract for, uh, people that are in those significant positions, it has an effect on their morale, as well as the morale of the people who work in their, uh, their offices or their departments. So, uh, I would encourage the Board to give some thought to bringing that to a, a quick conclusion. It's been several months now, and, uh, it, it's just something that I, I think it's time to, to act on it. Uh, you shouldn't be dragging that out. One last thing, uh, it, it's, it's been very disappointing to be at this meeting tonight. Uh, I, I think in some cases, there have been personal attacks that do not belong at a public Board meeting. Uh, I think it's a shame that you cannot, as a Board, sit down behind closed doors and air your thoughts with one another, but I understand that legally you cannot do that, that if you're all sitting there together, then it has to be open to the public. It would be nice if the public would consent to allow you to do that, because you have some issues that need to be worked out. Uh, Mr. Chiarella says that it doesn't help to, uh, bring in the school boards and run us through a workshop, but I don't know what, I don't know what else you have at your disposal. But personal attacks on each other, personal attacks on our administration are not in the best interest of this district, and they are not in the best interest of educating our children. Uh, I think you are spending far too much time on your own personal agendas and politics, as opposed to focusing upon improving the education system within our district. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I was, first of all, Falcon Care, again, I've never heard a bad thing about, oh, Blue Masters, not in my court. Never heard a bad thing about it, um, great job on that. I was gonna talk about HR six-ten, um, that is the, um, repealing of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Uh, if you remember, that ties vouchers into block grants. Uh, it's stuck in, I think, the House Representatives now, but they're trying to reface it. Uh, I wanted to call everybody to organize against it. Um, also tucked in in that, if they push that along, is the repeal of the No Hungry Kids Act, which is all that healthy food repeal, that'll be gone. Um, you'll be able to do whatever you want in schools again. So, again, whether you like vouchers or not, which I'm kind of against, or whether you like healthy kids or not, which I'm guessing everybody's against, uh, we really should start organizing for that. Now to something else that just came up. So, the discussion, Mr. Russo, the discussion, what I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, you characterized it as a big problem, and I'm agreeing with you.
Can you address the President, please?
He is, he is.
We just said Mr. Russo.
Well, I want him to correct me if, if it's wrong. So, he said that we have evidence that people are manipulating IEPs in the school for monetary gain, and that we should create a policy, and that, I don't know if you used the word illegal or illicit hiring practices you've, you've seen. Uh, and then we talked a little bit, and then you decided not to follow up. So, I heard manipulating specialized kids for money, and possibly illegal hiring practices, and the Board's gonna do nothing. So, what I would- So what I would recommend, like you were saying, is you should go to the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office and file a complaint with the Office of Professional Standards. That way, they'll come in, and they'll tell you if there's a problem here or not. We don't have the board involved, we don't have to hire any special people. They will come in, yes or no, there's an issue. If there's an issue, then they will take it up, and then it's out of everybody's hands. So I just wanted to make sure. We said a lot of things, and then we said, eh, all right, maybe we'll look into it.
No, I believe we let Mr. Goodall look into it.
But I know there was a push to maybe do it externally.
There was, and that did not...
I would recommend you go to the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office with this. Again, my son is an IEP. If my son's being used for monetary gain by the school district, I think the police should know. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Okay, seeing none, we'll go to closed session resolution. Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hear my moves to go into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter two-three-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, NJS eight-ten-colon-four-dish-six through ten-colon-four-dish-twenty-one to discuss the following subject: MTBOE SSA negotiations, proposed MBO, Monroe Board of Education, Monroe MTEA sidebar agreement. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. So moved. Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll move into closed session. It should take fifteen minutes, but they're going to give us a half an hour. We are moving back into public session, and I have a resolution. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the previously submitted sidebar agreement between the board and the Monroe Township Education Association regarding clubs and athletic trainer. The board president and the business administrator board secretary are hereby authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to implement the aforementioned sidebar agreement.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Ryback, Ms. Arminio, comments or questions? Then we'll have a roll call.
Mrs. Arminio.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarela.
Yes.
Mrs. De Mayo.
Yes.
Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Ryback.
Yes.
Mr. Rutzke.
Yes.
And Mrs. Cole Panovich.
Yes.
Madam Board President, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak to the closed session items? Okay, seeing none. Our next scheduled Board of Education meeting is scheduled for September twelfth, two thousand eighteen, seven o'clock PM at the Monroe Township High School. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Arminio.
No.
Mr. De Mayo, Mr. Ryback.